Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm.
Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura and this is your flash briefing for the week of March 17th. City Council will meet for regular session Tuesday night 6:00 in council chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. It's Fix the Week Week. Don't let your money go down the drain. A household faucets and toilets can waste over 10,000 gallons of water a year. Enough to fill a swimming pool. Have questions? Call Water Utilities at 969-1900 or schedule a service check at lswater.net. Looking for a career change or just starting out in the workforce? Attend the city's career fair and expo on March 20th from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Gambler Community Center. Attendees can visit with hiring departments about job opportunities, complete applications, and interview onsite for select positions. Learn more at lspeople.net. And the public is invited to an in-person meeting on March 19th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Hawthorne Hill Elementary to learn more about the shared road alignment study. Conceptual exhibits will be available to view and attendees can ask questions, provide feedback, and gain insights into the timeline, scope, and impact on the community. Find more information on the city's website. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
The city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just the dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the excess off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there and he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the sign letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's the finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. It's come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Officers en route, 914 armed drone.
It's a member of Level.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, Ryan. Thank you. Is there any indicator that shows are we supporting a need?
You know how they talk about gym rats, kids that grew up with their dads that were coaches? Like I was a City Hall rat. My dad, Tom Lovell, was hired as the Parks Administrator in 1978 and spent 40 years in public service here in Lee Summit. I would go up on the weekends when he was working and I'd run around and play and do things. And I didn't know what he was doing at the time, but I just knew that was part of our weekend routine some days was to go up and hang out at City Hall. Being part of a city from a young age to now in my adult life, you reap so many benefits from that. The people you know, you care more for something that you've been a part of. My wife and I knew we wanted to raise a family. Just trying to find a community that we thought we could raise our children in that was good to me. And it just felt like the right move as we were deciding on a city to come back to. Fortunate to have started a business in 2018. I founded Lovell Insurance Group and we are a business insurance brokerage. So we help businesses procure insurance. Decided to throw our flag in the ground here in Lee Summit and it's grown. I also have this passion for learning and curiosity and I started a podcast series. So I really enjoy this opportunity where I sit down with business owners and tell their story. And get this out to other people in hopes that maybe it betters their life and gives them some inspiration. It's going to be a really exciting time. Obviously this city is in my blood. My dad's been a part of it for a long time, so I'm really excited. Thank you all. A lot of people would say I was crazy, right? So why do you throw your hand up and subject yourself to going into city politics? I think especially as I've gotten older, I just felt, you know, maybe a civic duty, like a responsibility to say, hey, this city's been great to me. Here's a way that I can give back and take some of my skills and put them to work for the people of this city. I wanted to bring a different maybe way of thinking and take some of my business acumen and see areas that it may apply to how we develop and grow this community. And just give a different perspective. One of our biggest challenges, but also one of our biggest opportunities is how do we develop and grow this community? We don't want to grow too fast, but we want to grow at a pace that helps support who and what we are as a community. So we've got a lot of opportunities, whether that be through development or parks. We've got a lot of land coming on board. So I just think it's important, like it's a challenge, but it's also our greatest opportunity. And so we just got to be smart how we do that. It's just asking some different questions. Like I'm just, I'm one that, I'm not contrarian for contrarian's sake. What I am is someone will tell me something and then I want to get to that position with them by just asking thoughtful questions along the way. And then if I can get there, then I feel like we've answered everything we can to move that forward. Versus, hey, here's kind of how we've done it. I'm never the, this is how we do it, this is how we've always done it, this is how we'll continue to do it. All of my practical experience has put me in this position to serve and I just raised my hand and said, I want to do that. Which I was elected on April 5th, 2022. I feel this obligation to carry this legacy that my dad did, my family did, and then giving my kids an environment to grow up in that makes them want to come back. My kids have started rec sports through the Parks and Recreation System and I'm watching them play soccer on this sport field that my dad helped develop. And my dad's sitting there with me, right? I mean, that's just, that's the stuff that really matters in life.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege of serving our community. Guide our hearts and minds with wisdom, patience, and fairness. May our decisions bring peace, progress, and unity to our city. Bless all who live and work here and help us lead with integrity and compassion. Amen.
Yeah, and welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session number 31. Can I get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Rader.
Present.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Present.
Councilmember Carlisle.
Present.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here. Councilmember Lovell is zooming in, so if you were wondering. Thank you for zooming in, Councilmember Lovell. So next, first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember, or Mayor Pro-Tim Lopez. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Councilmember Lovell, did you want to chime in on that one?
Aye.
Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Hodges, I believe, yes, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Next is council roundtable. These are items of general interest, things going on in the community and such. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. It's great that we have the folks from downtown Main Street here today and Lee Summit Tourism, because I wanted to congratulate them on a wonderful Shamrock the Block event. Took the family down there and Felix loved the bubble machine. So highly recommend that we do that again next year. And he loved the train mascot, that I can't remember his name, but I'm sure our DMO person will mention that when she comes up later, so.
Did the bubbles not blow away really fast?
That was part of the beauty, that they had a whole machine, so they were just flying everywhere.
Would have been crazy, yeah.
Oh, yes. It was the best day of his life. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to correct, the Cultural Commission, it says appoint Emily Smangler, but it's actually Emily Spangler. So the name was wrong, so I just wanted to correct the name. Thank you.
Catch. Thank you. At the end of the evening, we'll do council comments and we'll probably say a couple of things about our trips to Jeff City and then Washington DC. But council members went to Jeff City a couple of weeks ago and then also to Washington DC to talk to our elected officials. And I just want everybody to know, community-wise, we have just great relationships with our elected officials at the state level and the federal level, our representatives and senators. And we were welcomed with open arms and so we're fortunate to have them fighting for us and trying to support what we're doing, you know, back boots on the ground. But also it's tribute to the council and we've really worked hard at making sure we do go every year and we make friends and support them as well. So maybe I'll give a little bit more detail at the end of the night, but I just wanted to get that out there upfront, so. All right, we have a proclamation tonight. I think it's from our Wellness Commission. So if those members would meet me at the front here, I'm going to read a proclamation. Hello. You brought a bunch. Come in this way, just a little bit more. Yeah, there we go. Because we'll get a picture afterwards, but first I'll read the proclamation and then we'll kind of go down the line if you don't mind. All right. Whereas the City of Lee Summit acknowledges the importance of good nutrition to sustain a healthy community to live, work, and play. And whereas food is a substance by which life is sustained and eating proper foods are beneficial to our bodies and especially important for brain health. Whereas the type, quality, and amount of food that individuals consume each day plays a vital role in their overall health and physical fitness. And whereas the Wellness Commission aims to help the Lee Summit community be its healthiest on all eight dimensions of wellness, including physical wellness through nutrition. Whereas there is a need for continuing nutrition, education, and wide-scale effort to enhance healthy eating practices. Whereas the 2025 theme for National Nutrition Month is Food Connects Us. By virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Lee Summit, I do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as National Nutrition Month. Well, you seem to cover all things wellness and a good place to start is physical wellness. So would you tell us a little bit about how you're doing and maybe let everybody say who they are?
Well, we're going to give a presentation here in a little bit, so I think I'll, I'm just very appreciative. We have so many members of the commission here and we did want to start focusing on making sure we're providing education to the community. So Nutrition Month was a great start for that. And I'm Jennifer Craig, Chair of the Wellness Commission.
Hi, I'm Amy Hubbard. I'm Vice Chair of the Wellness Commission.
Gary Dinney.
Jeff Brandhorst.
Megan Severt-Culbertson.
Steve Solansky.
Ed Kramer.
Susan Berry.
We are excited to hear about the Wellness Commission and the update and thank you for the proclamation and we'll take a photo real quick. Thank you all. All right. We have quite a few presentations tonight, but we are going to start with the Wellness Commission. The Wellness Commission and the Cultural Commission are here tonight. They've been working, oh, not quite a year, I don't believe, but they've been working and they're going to bring us updates as to what they're doing and such, has new committees. And so we're excited to see these presentations. So Ms. Craig's going to lead us off with the Wellness Commission.
All right, thank you for having us. We appreciate the opportunity to provide an update. And this is a picture of some of our Wellness Commission members involved in a community activity supporting Zero Suicide Prevention Walk held in our community last fall. So wanted to show that not only are we meeting, but we're engaged in community activities as well. Just as a reminder, our group has been meeting and represents both new and long-term time residents. And we have a diverse representation of backgrounds, but everyone shares a passion for wellness on our commission. So we looked at and did a lot of planning as part of, and this is an update just since our last presentation, that we did agree on a unified definition of wellness using eight dimensions. That wellness, while yes, physical health and mental wellbeing, emotional wellbeing is important, but we also wanted to make sure we were incorporating spiritual health. spiritual health, intellectual health, environmental health, financial health, occupational health, and also social health and wellness. And so, that's really the framework in which we're conducting our work and engaging with community partners. Since we last reported to the commission, we have either begun or completed seventeen of our twenty-two action items that were approved by the council, and there have been over twenty-four hours of board investment in meetings alone, not to mention the community activities that commissioners have engaged in. So, some of those highlights are, we've developed a partnership resource catalog, and we've identified over a hundred organizations that we see as potential community partners in this work of wellness. We also were able to get a presentation of the Jackson County Health Assessment Review specifically related to Lee's Summit, and use that to incorporate some of our action steps and define our next steps. We are also looking at the Community for All Ages Program and making sure that we're incorporating action steps that include all ages of our community. Also, we have a subcommittee that is reviewing our Livable Streets Initiative, and they're currently working on policies, and we will be providing updates on that in our next update. We also have ongoing partner outreach with identified community partners, and we have worked on a public education and engagement framework to look at how we can use these eight dimensions of wellness to provide public education and also engagement with community organizations that are aligned with community wellness as well. And so, the proclamation tonight is a first step. I think we will be hopefully back in May to talk about also bike, biking wellness and also Mental Health Month as well. Participation in a youth mental health forum, and ongoing discussions on how we support youth in our community and also parents. We've also, the picture I showed was the participation in the Suicide Prevention Month, Good Neighbor Week Partner. Also, we have several commissioners who are actively involved in Jackson County Public Health, Inc. Lab. There's a focus on not only mental health, but also housing, and so we have several commissioners that are also very actively engaged in that as well. We are also currently working on identifying health indicators and how to use data to track our progress, and so we've partnered not only with public health, but also community partners that are tracking key data that we can look at over time and report back. And then this month is Nutrition Month and providing resource education on that. Next quarter, our focus will be continuing policy reviews specifically in the area of livable streets, education engagement on the eight dimensions of wellness, looking at wellness indicators and finalizing data we want to track over time, and further engaging with partners and inviting them to present and collaborate with us. We have a lot of great resources in our community, and we want to leverage those strengths and make sure we're not duplicating services. And we thank you for your ongoing support, leadership, and participation, and certainly willing to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open it up for questions. I love the broad spectrum, and I love the key performance, you know, indexes and the monitoring you guys are going to be doing going forward and have started, so. Questions or comments from council? All right, well, thank you for coming in, and keep up the great work. I remember years ago when we did the strategic planning and all the great ideas that came out of that process, and looks like you're incorporating so many of them, so thank you.
Have a great group, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is the presentation from the Cultural Commission, also an excellent group that is newer. I see you've got the chair coming up, Dave Eames, and I think you brought a few of your members as well tonight.
You're doing the keys, right?
You want me to have them stand up and we can wave at them?
Good. Yeah, as a matter of fact, there is a handful of us from the Culture Commission tonight, so if you all could stand up real quick, including our two newest members.
Yes.
Emily Spangler and Addie Fortin here, so tomorrow night is our, is our monthly meeting, so hopefully we better turn out.
Right.
Thanks, guys. All right, well, Mayor, council, city staff, I'm excited to be back in front of you guys. We, I know we visited, yeah, almost a year ago about where we were, and tonight's a nice opportunity to catch up on where we are. So, my name is Dave Eames, and I have the honor of being the Chair of our Cultural Commission here in the City of Lee's Summit. We held our first meeting way back in September of 2023, and since then, that's almost eighteen months. We've made progress, we've made changes, we've made partnerships, and we've made friends all around the city, which is a pretty cool thing. So, our group is made up of a really wonderful cross-section of citizens here in the city, and they bring a really, a wealth of experience and skills and commitment to our group each month. But most importantly, they are driven by their love for this place, and that's a very important thing in our, in the Culture Commission to have, because if you, if you love where you live, that becomes a real keystone to protect it and to promote it, which is a big part of what we want to do on the commission. So, we don't have eight dimensions, but we've got five really cool bubbles. These are our, these are kind of our, basically are overlying subjects of our commission, and again, it all starts with people. You know, we focus on our, our human heritage here in Lee's Summit, but also our natural heritage, too, and when you weave all those together, that's what makes really the mission of our, our commission going forward. So, places, that's, that's easy to understand, history, of course, we have a wealth of amazing history in our city, the environment, which is becoming a bigger and, and more stronger place in our cultural mission, and then, of course, artistic expression, which can represent any of those five. So, here are our five main priorities that we are currently working on. We've met with Mizzou in terms of mapping our cultural assets, and that was an exciting meeting, because imagine everything in your head being thrown up on the wall and taken down and potentially put on a map or a resource that people could use. So, they helped us collect all of those ideas of all of the amazing assets in the city. We've worked on policies, including our public art policy, we're working to connect with our cultural partners, including the History Museum. Speaking of the History Museum, just the stories alone of our unique history here in Lee's Summit, we're working hard to try to promote those and showcase those. And then, of course, on the environmental side, incorporating preservation of our natural heritage, native plants, things like that into our beautification goals and just the way our city looks. So, here's our work plan update for, for the, for 2025, and I'll just hit on a few highlights here. We, we met with MU Extension, and that's underway, in fact, we're meeting with them in a couple of months to, to hone that down even sharper. We have a nice, new public art guidelines book, which will help the city move forward when they, when we're talking about public art, murals, things like that. We've got some really cool preservation activities coming up in the month of May. Pollinator Fest is back again this year. We're working hard to reach out to our partners, including History Museum and other creative outlets here in the city. Two of our members were on a subcommittee to pick the new murals that will be in the parking garage and across the street there on the five, on the four main panels in front of the new market. Public engagement, we've got a subcommittee set forth on that, where that's an opportunity for some of us to go out, speak to people, spread the word about what the commission's doing. And then, a really interesting thing happened late in the year with the, with the native planting, the, the gardens up near Amtrak there, that are just north of where the station is. That's a great opportunity for beautification, and it kind of ran its life already, and it was overgrown, so now we're going to use that as an opportunity to showcase Lee's Summit's native heritage in that spot, where visitors will see it, which is a pretty cool thing. Coming up, the remainder of this first quarter, those are our four, four key things that we're going to work toward. I'll just highlight number two, for example, that's, again, some outreach we're going to do from a, a subcommittee within our commission to get the word out, to let people know we're here as a resource, but more importantly, to listen to them. What are, what are their strategies, what are some things they can tell us to, to move us forward on the cultural art side? And finally, I just wanted to, again, to, to show my appreciation to the council, to the mayor, to the city for their support and partnership in, in this commission. I mean, it's been eighteen months, which have been a real thrill, we've got to meet new people, make new friends, create good relationships across the city, and those are super important for us. We have amazing cultural, artistic, historic, and natural wonders in our area, and this is the commission's goal, is to make sure we showcase these, inventory these, and then spread the word about these. So, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Do you, can you tell us a little bit about, this, this commission was a little bit more of a challenge, because you were taking a pretty diverse group of people and putting them all in one room. How's that gone? Because last year, you know, you'd just kind of begun.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think it's gone really well, I think people, you can start to see them start to open up to the other opportunities, because so much of the, that, those things overlap anyway, so if maybe your, maybe your specific focus was just on historic architecture, to see those kind of folks open up to the possibilities of public art and sculpture, and how those kind of things can work together.
Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to both of these commissions, definitely seems like they're doing good work, and I was just thinking about how it ties to some of the council priorities that we've been talking about, like beautification, that we've been talking about as a group, and, you know, the Livable Streets Initiative, the public art initiatives. We've talked about what a, a, a big topic beautification is, it's so hard to get our, our arms around, and it's great to have some of these citizen groups to really dig into some of these specifics and bring forth some recommendations on, on things like public art policies, so I just really appreciate that work. Thank you.
Yeah, what she's saying is we need help. It's a big, it's a big, we've been trying to wrap our arms around, and we're like, holy cow, this is, this is a, a big endeavor, thank goodness we have a cultural commission to help with this, because there's a lot of aspects of beautification that we're trying to, we're trying to do our part as well, but in coordination with you.
Sure.
So, yeah, I, I appreciate that. All right, any other questions, comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Eames, keep up the great work, Cultural Commission, thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to a few more presentations. At least once a year, we want, we like to get updates from our Public Service Agreement recipients, these would be the Downtown Lee's Summit Main Street, the Lee's Summit Visitors' Bureau, and the Lee's Summit Economic Development Council, and so we're going to start off with our award-winning Downtown Lee's Summit Main Street and its director, our director, Donnie Rogers, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council, for having us here tonight. Told to keep it short, I could talk for, till midnight, and I know you guys have a lot of those meetings, so we're going to hit the highlights and try to keep it as short as possible. Donnie Rogers, Executive Director, Downtown Lee's Summit Main Street. With me tonight, I have our Board President Ben Wine, and our Board Member Hillary Graves in attendance. For those of you watching at home or in the audience that may not be aware, Downtown Lee's Summit Main Street, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, the dedicated revitalization of the heart of our community. We are part of the National Main Street Center and Main Street America, and we follow the four-point approach in community revitalization that focuses on promotion, economic enhancement, design, and organization. Since the beginning, we've worked closely with National Main Street Center, they've been a resource for trainings, leadership development, networking, and best practices. Annually, we go through accreditation process, every year there's a self-assessment, and every two years there's an onsite visit with a representative from National Main Street Center and Missouri Main Street Connection. We are nationally accredited, we're one of nine communities in the state of Missouri that has this designation. Of course, I'd like to highlight, in December of 1989, we were founded, so we are celebrating thirty-five years this year, this is our picture of our first Board of Directors, these were some visionary community business and residents of the community that really saw what the potential for downtown had, and so we're happy to build upon the foundation they laid for our community, and I'd like to think they'd be quite proud of what we've done. Of course, I have a staff of four, but we would not be able to do anything without the amazing volunteer support we get each year. Our volunteers in 2024 logged 2,219 hours across events, across committee meetings, we had sixteen volunteers take part in one of four state trainings that we were able to offer them to attend for free, and so that's a great opportunity to help build future leaders in our community. Our most visible, visible part of the organization is all the events we do. As Hillary mentioned earlier, the Shamrock the Block was our most recent event, and so this is just a small highlight of all the events we have, going to highlight some of my favorite memories from 2024. So, of course, our Farmer's Market had a great season in 2024, we were at capacity for vendors on Saturdays, that means about thirty-seven full-season vendors there in the lot at Second and Douglas next to Lee's Summit Elementary. We also had thirteen vendors on our Wednesday market, the 2024 season saw 27,000 shoppers come down, we expect to blow the, out of the water this year when we move to Green Street, we're very excited for that. Shamrock the Block was a new event last year that took the place of what we traditionally did, the Emerald Isle Parade. Unfortunately, since COVID, after COVID, we were not seeing a lot of parade entries, but we saw a lot of demand for people wanting to come out and celebrate, so we switched up to a block party, this event was actually designed with Green Street in mind, so we'll be moving that event in 2026 to Green Street, and I think I heard that we need a work order for bubble machines out there. So, but yeah, so that's an exciting event, the first year we had twenty community groups and businesses sign up to get booth space, we doubled it this year, we had about 6,000 in attendance last year, so a lot of fun with that event. Our Fourth Friday Art Walks are held April through August, we averaged about twenty businesses, downtown businesses hosting artists each evening of that event, and we actually hosted over a hundred and thirty-two artists for the full season from April to August, so a great opportunity to highlight local art in our downtown. Downtown Days, the first weekend in June, welcomed 80,000 people to our downtown community that represents over $2 million in local tourism spending. And of course, the end of the season, or end of the year, the mayor's tree lighting kicks off our holiday season, we got to celebrate that on Southeast Main Street with 8,000 of our closest friends and family on Southeast Maine. Some of our marketing promotion statistics for 2024, across the meta-platforms of Facebook and Instagram, we had over 2 million people reached through posts, we've got over 32,971 Facebook fans, 10,596 Instagram followers, and we dipped our toes into TikTok, I have a staff of millennials, we struggle with TikTok, we're not Gen Z's. Our most viral post for 2024 was a mayor's tree lighting, 160,000 views, and then unfortunately, we reached out to Dave Eames, our favorite Gen Xer with a million-dollar laugh, and put up a video in, to represent the sidewalk sale in January, and gave him a Gen Z script, and so if you've not seen it, I don't understand all the words, like boots and sleigh, whatever.
Does he laugh in it? Because I would, I would listen to his laugh, like, over and over and over again.
We end it with a, a, a laugh track.
Okay.
He reached 264,000 people.
It's worth, it's worth looking it up, it's worth looking it up, because you will laugh, just listening to Dave laugh.
I will say, I forgot to mention with the mayor's tree lighting video, it was so great reading those comments on TikTok, because the number of people that we reached here locally, that were in love with our downtown, but the number of people that then saw it outside of our community were just like, I want to live in a place like that.
Oh, wow.
And so, we'll continue to learn TikTok in 2025, I can't make any promises, we'll beat those records. Our website had 239 pages viewed, 239,000 pages viewed, our top five pages, come to no surprise, events, Farmer's Market, Business Directory, Available Space, and then Oktoberfest, beat out Downtown Days, so kudos to our friends at the Chamber. We also do traditional mailings, in the holiday season, we do postcards to over 12,000 households in the Lee's Summit area, and we just started doing this now, this season, to our spring events, to those same households, and so we use the US Postal Service Every Door Direct Mail and get that into the community's hands, because we know not everyone is on social media or in the email form. Some of our favorite headlines to highlight for the year. Some of our favorite headlines to highlight for the year, in June of this year, five of our small businesses in Downtown Lee Summit were selected by American Express and Main Street America as grant recipients for $10,000 to support their businesses. We had five businesses represented. Those include Belfiore, Grains &amp; Taps, Katie's Books, Inspo, Michael K. Shell Design, and Megan's Yoga Tribe. There were some states that didn't even have five businesses recognized, and so as a community, having five just really speaks to the strength of our downtown and those business owners. Then in August, we had the state-level 230 Southwest Maine, which is the former commercial hotel or the old bank of Lee Summit, now home to ITAP and Reese Nichols. That was recognized by Missouri Main Street Connection as their top facade winner for 2024, and so that represents a lot of work we've done on design standards, historic preservation in this community, and just the amazing work that Drake did with that facility. And then in 2024, we welcomed nine new businesses downtown. Those include Team Cocktail, O.C.'s KC, Nova Vintage, Purple Hippopotamus, Mezner Bee Farm, Four Generations Wealth Management, which was a relocation from Blue Springs, Little Miss Miley's Baby Boutique, Fit Check, and Cowboy Kitchen. Those nine businesses brought 23 net, or new, full-time equivalent jobs to our downtown. And then, of course, all of this is just building upon the last fifteen years. We started taking statistics in 2009, coming out of the recession of the impact of our organization. We've had over 58,900 hours of community service back to the community and supporting these events and activities. We've welcomed 109 net new businesses in the last fifteen years downtown, over 831 net new full-time equivalent jobs, and almost 74 million in private and public, or excuse me, private investment in renovations and new construction downtown. And then I mentioned accreditation. We just hosted our accreditation in February of 20, February 26. We hosted a representative from Missouri Main Street and one from National Main Street Center. This is always my, a great opportunity, one of my favorite things we do is taking time to actually pause and reflect and look back at the successes and the challenges from the year prior. We received great feedback and ideas. They actually perform an assessment review for us and give us kind of ideas moving forward. Three of the big ones we'll be working on coming up, we'll be updating our priorities, our transformation strategies is what we call them. The current ones we have in place were first adopted in 2018 with community surveys and stakeholder input, and we re-adopted those in 2023 as a board, but we'll be re-looking at those. Those 2018 priorities were permanent farmer's market pavilion, more people living downtown, and active alleyways and placemaking. Another task we'll be looking forward in this year is seeking out opportunities to do more training for our committees and also strengthen collaboration between our committees, working towards those adopted priorities and transformation strategies. And then third, looking to broaden our community engagement at all levels of the organization from board down, so making sure we have more people at the table throughout the community. We have a great board, very active board, with a lot of business owners downtown, and so we want to make sure we're reaching all parts of our community. So with that, I'll leave you with a picture. I love this picture and I love this quote, "We're creating the place that people want to be." And so I really think that downtown is kind of the heart of it all, and I'm thankful for the support we've received from council to make that possible.
All right. Thank you, sir. Questions or comments? Main Street. Well, we're certainly proud of what you're doing. Love to see in the numbers, though. We don't actually get to see that very often. We just like liking your posts and such and coming downtown.
Keep liking them.
But we want to quantify, and to hear the numbers is really impressive, especially when you look at it cumulatively over time. But, you know, it's just, you can tell that you guys are putting a ton of effort and time into each, each event, each experience, and that's what it's all about when you say, creating the place people want to be. It's, our downtown is experiential, and it makes you feel really wonderful when you're downtown and in the moment, so I'm really, couldn't be, couldn't be more pleased, and I know that the council is very proud of our downtown. So you guys came forward this last year, and we supported, you know, a much-needed boost, given you'd been, you'd been at the same amount for so long, as far as financially, and so that was well-deserved as well, and just keep up the great work. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Shields. I see she chimed in here. Go ahead, councilmember.
I mean, I really can't say it better than that. You guys run a great organization downtown. When you, when you mentioned those goals that you set a few years ago, like obviously you're hitting all of those, and it's great. I did just have a question. I know you've given me some of this data before. When you get that Pacer data about how many visitors these different events bring in, how does that tend to break down with Lee Summit residents and people from outside of our community, which are both valuable? We want to bring in outside dollars, and we want to serve.
I need to do more of that. I know with Downtown Days, I think it was roughly, we figured one of every, was it four of, or one of every five or something was Lee Summit residents, one of every four, like it was, or forty percent of Lee Summit, I think, is, yeah. I don't, I'm terrible with numbers on the spot, but I will definitely have those. But, yeah, no, I know I was trying to look at Pacer data for this last Saturday, and it's not up yet to see kind of how the event compared, but yeah.
No worries, and they're both valuable. I just, I remember when we were talking about Downtown Days, that we saw that it actually was a huge percentage of our community when, when you looked at it, something like forty percent of Lee Summit had come out to it.
Yeah, I think it's forty, yeah.
And that might be a little over half of the people total of this. I forget exactly how it broke down, but it was like amazing how many people in our community are able to enjoy an activity like that, so.
Definitely.
I love to see that data and look forward to continuing to hear updates on it, so I appreciate the work you guys do.
Appreciate that. The one number I can tell you, too, is last year we had 2.9 million visits to downtown, and so some of that is multiple return trips. I think the average is somewhere around four and a half to 4.6 times an individual comes back downtown, but to think we've hosted over almost 3 million visits to downtown, so.
About, about ten of those visits a day are me, back and forth from my house. Do you count that?
You may count as an employee, and you wouldn't count towards those visits, but that's visitors looking there, I mean, yeah.
Sorry. Are you done? Sorry. Hey, I know you're really proud of your staff, but you should be. They do a great job and make everybody feel really welcome and included, you know, as far as council and other organizations, the way you work with them, so thank you for that as well. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Don't you feel like we should give applause after each one of these? I mean, you know. This is for, this is for all the presentations I went through. Wow, we are really excited to hear about the next one because this is the Visitors Bureau. We put this, or DMO, Destination Marketing, Market Organization, and we put this together, how long ago has it been now? A year and a half ago? And, and then you have a new hire, Ms. Rockhold, Tina Rockhold is going to, is the chair, I believe, and she's going to introduce Ms. Day, our new director.
Good evening, Mayor Barrett and City Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening, and thank you for this opportunity to allow us to provide this mid-year update on the progress and accomplishments of the Lee Summit Visitors Bureau since last August when we met. I am Tina Rockhold. I am the Vice Chair of the Bureau, and alongside me today is Cory Day, our new Executive Director. We're so happy to have her on board. First, I think it's important for us to take just a few moments to recap the Bureau's journey, which has brought us to where we are today. The DMO, with assistance of several city employees, they have been absolutely fantastic to work with us. We've worked together to file a 501(c)(6) application, and thereafter, following some discussion, we determined it was in the best interest of the city as well as the DMO to file an application for a 501(c)(3). That would mean that in the future, there would be charitable giving opportunities to the organization as well as open additional opportunities for grant funding. The board adopted bylaws, elected officers, and established four committees, executive, the personnel, budget and finance, and marketing and sales. The board developed a three-year prospective budget and negotiated with city council for a three-year public service agreement, and that was executed in September of 2024. Thank you for your support. Since January of 2024, the board has regularly held monthly meetings to ensure timely progress to the organization goals. And lastly, the board is super excited to have executed the plan to hire the new Executive Director. Following a nationwide search and multiple rounds of interviews with participation and consultation from city employees, the DMO board, severely here this evening, and community partner leadership, Ms. Day was hired in January and began her new role. So we're excited to have her, and I wanted to invite her to the podium to report on the progress of some of the focus areas within our strategic snapshot.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Yeah, so we're very excited to be here tonight, to be able to report on some of the things that have occurred, not only over the past year, but even since I got here in January. So, and the marketing and advertising, which you will hear in the future, you'll hear a lot about this from us, because our job is to make sure that everybody knows how great Lee Summit is and tell our story outside of our own community as well as within our community. So one of the first things that was done last year was we applied for and received a competitive grant from the Missouri Division of Tourism. So that was meant for the funding of the development for our visitor profile study, which I'll talk a little bit more about, as well as our three-year marketing plan. So as we gear up, there are certain things that we needed to do to know what the next step was. So research is definitely one of those, and that is what the, the grant will, will, will help us fund, and then we are also planning on doing that again this year. We will apply for a new grant that, the deadline opens on April, or the, excuse me, they open on April 1st. So as I mentioned, the three-year marketing plan, there was a request for proposal that was sent out in February, and I am happy to say that that process is coming to a close. I can't, I can't say anything yet because the contract isn't signed, but we are very excited that hopefully that we will get that signed and begin work with that new firm April 1st, and so that we can figure out what our next steps are as far as marketing and advertising our city. The visitor profile study, a contract for the visitor profile study firm was signed, and they began their work on February 1st, and I did receive word this week that that is closed, so I will have those results to share with you just as soon as I get them from them. But we, basically what we're hoping to find out from the visitor profile study is we need to know who's coming to Lee Summit, who isn't coming to Lee Summit, what people think about Lee Summit, and that will help us decide where we need to be as far as marketing is concerned. Anybody who has executed a three-year marketing plan knows that media is very expensive, and the one thing we do not want to do is be irresponsible with the funds that you have so graciously given to us, and so we want to make sure we're making educated decisions when we buy our media, and the visitor profile study will be the first step in helping us figure that out. The visitor guide and the tear-off map were developed. The 2024 visitor guide was developed and distributed to our local tourism partners. The new visitor guide, which is in front of you, was developed by our very talented Creative Services Department, so we're very excited to get that back out to our hotels and attractions here in the city. Also, as in last year, we'll also be distributing those to some visitor centers that are even outside of our state, in addition to outside of our city. The new tear-off map was also developed and distributed to the local tourism assets and information locations, and we will continue to make sure that that stays updated and get the, get any updates that need to happen made and get those out. We participated with the Missouri Passenger Rail Committee. This is in coordination and participation with MoDOT, that is referred to as MORE PAC. We also participated in their marketing committee, which included tourism research and introduction events throughout the state to begin showcasing Lee Summit as a destination. So that is obviously directly tied to the Missouri River Runner and our location along that line with the Amtrak. Educational partnerships was another piece that we were dedicated to making sure that tourism played a part in, so we began several of those educational partnerships, which included Lee Summit being featured, a featured location for the University of Central Missouri's Backpack Journalism Project, Lee Summit High School's Future Business Leaders of America. We partnered with them to do marketing and promotion of Amtrak to students and families, and the board participated in numerous projects and event support to support the Lee Summit R7 School District's Hotel Tourism and Restaurant Management Program. And one of the things that I don't want to forget to mention, and I apologize, that I'll go back quickly to Amtrak, one of the activities that we participated in was the naming of Ollie the Otter, and so that is what Ollie's name is. That is the mascot that Councilmember Shields mentioned earlier. I would be remiss if I didn't mention probably the biggest tourism event that any of us will ever see, which is obviously the World Cup coming up in 2026. Tourism has been very involved in that planning, along with obviously many city staff members and over 150 community members currently that are signed up that want to volunteer their time to help. We've been participating with the KC 2026 at a regional and community level. We recently filed a 501(c)(4), Articles of Incorporation, for what we are going to call LS Goal 26, which will be the name of the group of community members and folks that are making sure that Lee Summit rises to the top of all the places to see and do while they're here in Kansas City. I have the privilege of serving on that five-person board, along with obviously four other community members. We've been holding regular quarterly meetings since the end of 2024, and as I mentioned, you know, we do have an amazing community and a group of, of community members that want to help, and we continue to get new members every day, it seems like, but we are at about 150 community members that are participating in, in those meetings, so that's very exciting. And this, I will be brief here, but as I mentioned, the visitor profile study and the marketing plan are really our first steps that we're taking as far as the sales part of what we do. It's, as I, as I said, we just, we haven't invested significantly in this yet because we really felt like the homework we needed to do was important to make sure that we were doing the right thing, because you can throw a lot of dollars at media, and if you're not in the right markets and the right places, then it doesn't really make any difference. So we will be back to you when we hopefully are going to be launching our fall campaign. So I will turn it back over to Tina to finish up our presentation.
In the area of public relations and communications, we highlighted four areas here. Hotel outreach. Ms. Day and the DMO have provided tourism information and collateral to every hotel and attraction within the Lee Summit footprint. Those materials include the purpose for forming the DMO, the mission and contact information. Community events. The board participated, the board has participated in numerous, numerous community partner events to increase awareness and visibility of the board. We already discussed earlier, some of those are Oktoberfest, booze barks and badges, and most recently Shamrock the Block, to name just a few. Speaking engagements, oh my goodness, Cory has been like the roadshow. She has been out and about, along with other board members, speaking at several community group meetings to spread understanding of the Bureau and increase excitement about tourism in Lee Summit. Some examples include city boards, city commissions, Rotary Clubs in the Chamber. This board considers itself a working board and very excited to do so. We would say that we've contributed a lot of sweat equity, personal time and investment in the work. We believe in this product. We believe in the, in tourism and what it can bring to Lee Summit, so we are excited to participate in numerous ways and build those community partnerships that will help us be more effective as a board and as a DMO. The visitor experience, Cory has alluded to several of these already, the visitors' guide. Those have already been distributed, 1,500 initially printed and distributed throughout high-traffic areas within the city of Lee Summit footprint, and additionally, the lodging and attractions tear-off map, which highlights points of interest throughout the area, and those have been distributed to the same areas as the visitors' guide. Lastly, the Amtrak events with Ollie the Otter leveraging Lee Summit's proximity to rail transportation. The DMO will engage in numerous opportunities that provide for visitors and travelers through Amtrak. And I think that concludes our presentation. We're open to any questions that you have. Again, thank you so much on behalf of the board for your trust and your confidence in the DMO and for making this work possible. Questions?
Yes, we have questions, probably. I'll just start off with an easy one. What, what Ms. Day is, are the easiest amenities to try to draw people to our community? Boy, that's just a softball question, but still.
Well, Donnie obviously gave you a really good presentation on one of them.
We see we're still giving Downtown Main Street kudos, so.
Well, I think it's, I, I think the thing that I've been most struck with since I've taken this position is just that the community itself loves itself so much, and I can tell you that I have been parts of, of communities that haven't felt you that I have been parts of communities that haven't felt that way, and it's very hard to sell a community that doesn't love itself. So the people of Lee Summit are going to end up being our biggest, I hope our biggest advocates, but they're definitely one of our biggest assets, because when you're here, you feel welcome. I was here, I mean, I felt like I've been here forever, just because when you walk into a room, people are just so excited to tell you whatever their story is about the community or what you should see or do, or, you know, and interested in what I was doing. And so I just feel really privileged to have the opportunity to market a city like this because they're not all like that, so.
Is it the same with the organizations you're working with? Because you have numerous.
Absolutely, yeah. I've been, it's interesting, it's only been two months, and I said that out loud a couple weeks ago, because March 6th was my second month anniversary. And there are days when I feel like I've been here for two years, and that's a good thing, because I just feel like I immediately was, you know, people welcomed me in, wanted me to be part of things. I mean, the work that I've already done with the EDC has been so exciting, and that's just one of many. So the Chamber has been awesome. I've learned so much from the folks over there and obviously my friends down in downtown. So, and my board, I can't, I can't say enough wonderful things about the board. The work they did made this, made walking into this position so easy because they've worked so hard, and they're still working hard. Some days I'm like, no, no, I'm here to do that now. You don't have to work so hard anymore, but I love their support, and it's, it makes a huge difference when you have a board that's actually willing to do the work.
Excellent. Well, we appreciate the work that you're doing as the board and as our new director, and we're excited to see, you know, what's next for the, for the organization.
Absolutely. I'll be back with lots of good news.
All right, can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then coming up, bringing up the Lee Summit Economic Development Council. We've got Michael Van Buskirk has been the chair. Let's help us navigate these waters the last year. It's gone really well. All the way to hiring a fantastic new executive director for the EDC, Joe Perry. Is he going to speak to?
He is. He definitely is. Good evening, Mike Van Buskirk. My full-time job is Newmark Zimmer, but I am very proud to be the chair of the EDC, and I'm really happy to be back in front of you all because there's so much that's happened. And I was, I was just thinking about it. I've been in front of you all a lot over the last six months, but a lot's happened here, and I'll try to be brief as we go through it. One of the first things that I do want to put up here, one of the tasks that we were working on was a new mission statement, vision statement, and core values. And I've rolled this out for the first time at one of our presentations to the school district, but I wanted to also put it out here for you all. This, this was developed by a committee of the board who got together for two and a half, three hours, brainstormed. It was amazing, by the way. I've said this to many folks, it took my company a year to do what we did, basically with a meeting with people focused, and it took some time to reflect on it, present it to the full board, and got it done. But I do want to share that with you, the vision statement and the core values. One of the things that we took into account when we were working on this was the success factors of EDOs from the study that we all had reviewed many times. But I was just very proud. I mean, this just is an example of how this board is working together, that I could get people together for that time period to focus on this and review a bunch of information we set out in advance and get this done. So I did want to share that with you. This is one of my favorite slides, as I've been giving presentations about the EDC. It's just like, what do we do at the end of the day? What, what is our goal? And attraction of new businesses, retention and expansion of existing businesses, workforce development, which you've heard me say many times how important that is, and more important every day for what I see in my full-time job, but also from EDC. And then marketing and communication, working together with our partners that have been up here today, which we're all collaborating together. Workforce Alliance, I think you all have seen this slide before, but we did update a few things on it. So the Workforce Alliance was started by the EDC in 2021, along with the education partners and community stakeholders. This group is continuing to do good work. They just had their last meeting, summer internship, externship opportunities. One of the things that's really cool about this is the pie chart on your right. You'll see the membership from business and industry of 67%. This is something I talk about all the time, that we need, we need to keep that growing, and I encourage you all to participate in that. If you're not a member or'd like to learn more about the Workforce Alliance, please let me know. But what we want to do as our organization, this group has stayed together, really, because we had a lot of good volunteers that kept it going, and we've been providing minimal amount of support. So now that we're back up and running again, we look forward to ramping this back up. LSCDC officers, nothing's changed here. I do want to mention John Ellis is here with us tonight, Jackie McCormick-Henue, our treasurer is with us. I believe we've got a couple other board members with us, Bill Brown, and also Megan Lipton with Dyser Taylor is in the audience tonight, and if I missed anybody else that came in, I apologize, and also Teresa Evans. The officers and the board have done a lot. And I heard earlier somebody mentioned volunteer hours. I wish I'd been tracking volunteer hours for this, for this group over the last two years, because it would be a lot. But I really want to call out the finance committee led by Jackie. They got a lot put, that's our only standing committee for the bylaws, and they've taken on a lot, and I really appreciate all the work that they've done. The board, as you may recall, with the restructure we did, the new bylaws, we have standing community partner members. So the Chamber, Downtown Main Street. I do want to acknowledge that Rachel Dyer was the representative of the DMO when we set up the new structure, and she jumped right in. And then when Cory was hired, she transitioned in as well, and Cory as well jumped in. I think that's been part of our success, is getting everybody around the table, the community partners, the education partners, and the private side. And going back to my discussion about the mission statement, it also helps when you're doing that kind of work to have a bunch of education folks in the room that like wordsmithing too, so. But anyway, this, this group, as I said, has done a great amount of work. We do have one opening that we know for sure is coming up, that will be this summer. Dan Rexroff, as many of you know, is retiring from John Knox Village after 35 years, and they've been such a great community partner, but also he's terming out. He timed it perfectly, that he was waiting to term out and retire with his EDC board role. So there'll be one opening at our last board meeting. We're already talking about that, and if there's any other potential openings, we'll be setting up our committee to evaluate those and taking applications for that. Some of this you've seen before on the organizational update. I'll just hit a few highlights. Of course, thank you all, we entered into a new public service agreement with the city in November. So it's just starting from there. We had, I'll back up on Teresa Evans. We entered into a short-term agreement with her, and very appreciative of Teresa agreeing to do that, because she's kept us going as a board and as an organization. But mission statement, vision statement, core values, as mentioned, conflict of interest, confidential policy, new code of ethics policy, short-term continuity of operations plan. Actually, two presentations to the school board. MOU draft negotiations taking place with the school board. Planning for our 40th anniversary event calendar in 2025. January meeting, which was sold out. We had a great economist, the John Ellis helped us, helped us line up. They gave a great forecast on both national, regional, and local economic update. Submitted our first biannual program status report on our new PSA in, at the end of the January. February networking reception, and then, as mentioned earlier, the Workforce Alliance meeting in February. Most of what you see on there, just think about this, this board officially started work in August. I became the officer. We were kind of late on the cycle of when this all was done. So basically, everything you see on there from short-term extension, this group has done in this period of time. So I'm very pleased by all the work. But one of the big things that we all knew that we had to do was hire the next president of this organization. So I did summarize for you here how that process went. Once again, a lot of board hours, a lot of volunteer time went into this. But we started in November, reviewed job descriptions, previous job description, job description of peer organizations. The recruitment plan was implemented, posted for the job. This tells you about what people think about Lee Summit. We had an overwhelming number of people that applied for this position. The recruitment committee narrowed down to 10, given serious consideration. Then we narrowed down to five to bring to the board for a recommendation that, for interviews. Did interviews over two days in February. And the interview committee was also volunteers of the board, but we set it up so we had a good cross-section of our community partners, education partners, private investors, and city representation. Interview committee then brought that recommendation to the board and narrowed to our top three candidates, then we did final interviews with the full board. The dates on this in February, there was a lot going on, but we were very excited when our top applicant accepted our job offer on February 26th. And I will tell you that Joe Perry, as we were talking to people about Joe Perry, and if, for some of you don't know, Joe Perry used to be in Lee Summit. I met Joe Perry.
25 years ago?
Yeah, I was gonna say, God, we're all both getting on. 25 years ago in Lee Summit, when he worked for David Gale at Gale Communities. So this is Joe coming home, is the way I kind of look at it. But as we were talking to people, and my best comment that I heard about Joe Perry was, that is a home run hire. And that came from somebody regionally that I really respect, that's in the economic development business. It was like, that is a home run hire. You can get Joe Perry, go get Joe Perry. So that tells you how he's thought of not just in Lee Summit, but regionally in economic development. One of the other things, we were talking about social media earlier when the Downtown Main Street, the response just has been overwhelming about bringing Joe. But what I've loved about it is, is we said that we need somebody that could hit the ground running. And Joe's been, he officially starts, by the way, April 1st, but Joe has been working a lot, I think, I know he has. I was getting emails over the weekend. You know, he was, even as we were still, still talking about the job, he was sending ideas. We're talking about who's a member, not a member, why aren't they a member on the private side. Just, it's just, it's pretty exciting. So I'm going to let Joe come up and talk about, and talk about himself and introduce himself a little more, and then also talk a little bit about the 90-day transition plan that we're working on that the board and Joe helped put together. So Joe?
I didn't pay for that introduction. Mayor and council, good evening. Old friends, new friends, I'm delighted to be standing here tonight. This is a coming home moment for me. I wanted to all of Lee Summit to know that the reason I would leave a job that I love with a team that I love is a community that would spend on a very busy agenda, time to talk about wellness, to talk about culture, to talk about the importance of how visitors feel when they come to your community, to talk about the downtown Lee Summit vibrancy and just explosion of development going on down here. When you look at all of that, that should be enough, but you add that to the reasons that I came to answer this call for this job. You have been just killing it in the world of having vibrant housing choices in this community. You're best in class in healthcare, in educational sources. You're just doing everything right. But one of the things that I did was reflect on the time when I was here before, working with David, and spent the first year this was open, about 150 meetings I was in this building the first year it was open, or the first couple of years it was open, when we were doing ArborWalk, New Longview, and Winterset Valley, all at the same time. Got to know the people here very well, and what I would just say to you is just to kind of, to cap off that, that interest is, the governance of this community has always been strong and consistent, and the economic resiliency of the community is both strong and resilient. So when, when we think about all of those reasons, anybody in my business would be delighted to be standing in front of you tonight. I would go to the next slide because I think, or I get to do that. Yes, got it. I went the wrong way, though. How about that? So for the next 90 days, I'm going to be more brief than I plan to be, and we can hit these things in more detail. The first thing, you're going to see a bunch of action words and statements. To learn. To learn means for me from Teresa Evans. She and I've already spent a half a day in the last week, and we intend to spend more time in the next month. To launch, we want to identify immediate opportunities for business attraction and retention. Teresa and I talked about balancing retention and expansion with attraction. A lot of communities miss half of that, and we don't want to miss half of that. We want to grow both. And the workforce development that Michael talked about, you have a strong core. I'm familiar with a lot of those agencies that you're already working with, and can't wait, because again, the strong educational background opportunities you have to train up a great workforce that you are growing. To listen. If you see me in a coffee shop in the next 90 to 120 days, that means I do want to be interrupted. I do want you to come and introduce yourself if I don't already know you, and I mean that to the community and to you. If you see me at the rec center, I can be interrupted. I love to be interrupted when I'm trying to navigate this old body around the gym. But please do see those as opportunities to get to know me. To expand, we want more members. We want more investors in the Lee Summit EDC. We have a lot of plans that I've talked to the board and about people outside that aren't investors yet, and can't wait to see how we might sell the value proposition of becoming a member of the Lee Summit EDC. Grow collaboratively. I've spent this afternoon with both Matt and Donnie, and plan to meet with Cory next week. That ecosystem of economic development, all of those to me are part of one team. The city staff's very busy, but I also want to meet with Ryan Elam and the city manager and other key employees as we really get into that work in the first 90 days. A success framework. We want to have KPIs, as other organizations have mentioned, so that you can now measure and have a reflection on your return of investment. As the largest investor in the Lee Summit EDC, that is something we want to build dashboards that you can reflect on. And as we develop those dashboards, I would be delighted to get your feedback of what is resonating and what is noise and not helpful in making further decisions. Lastly, two things. Building a network. The network that I described when interviewing for this job with state, local agencies, Missouri Partnership, Hawthorne Foundation, Missouri DED, KCADC, and all the other economic development agencies across the city and the metro. I am delighted to ply my contacts in that for this city that I know is going to be one that will be easy to sell because of all the things we mentioned before. And then finally, in the plan, we have a target date of December 31st for a strategic plan update. I posit to you tonight that possibly this might be more of an implementation and tactical plan. The planning that this city has done and the Ignite Plan that I think very well, the economic development portion of the Ignite Plan is very well stated and needs very little revision. I think we just need to be reflective on the good work of that and the Thomas P. Moore study and the work that the Lee Summit EDC staff has done in the past. Be reflective on those and get to implementation and work forward from that. If you have any questions, I'd be delighted, but again, I am so pleased to stand before you tonight and introduce myself and my passion for the role.
Very good. Thank you. Well, welcome. We're excited to have you. And it was a, we did see it as a home run hire. I was, you know, I'm on the board with Councilmember Shields, Councilmember Level, Mr. Dunning, and so we're excited to have you, you know, tell our story here in Lee Summit. I do want to kind of go back to Michael for a second. Michael Van Buskirk, Jackie and Jackie Henue, and John Ellis, and Bobby Alm Shipman, and the entire board. I mean, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I do know how much it's been, and it's been hours upon hours upon hours, and then... I do know how much it's been, and it's been hours upon hours upon hours, and then you just have remarkably gotten a lot of things done in a very short amount of time. Councilmember Shields on that finance committee as well, Doug Bates. It's really just, it's really been inspiring. It was, took a long way to get here, which was really hard, but to see it just all of a sudden snowball in a great way, it's very satisfying for me, and I'm sure for council. We do want to build on this relationship. So that's the one thing, Mr. Perry, that on that organizational update is, I get collaborate and I get all that stuff, that's great, but we want a relationship. This, and a relationship with the city means a relationship with Mr. Dunning and Mr. Elam, but also this council as a whole. So that's what we want. We don't just want it with Mr. Perry, we want it with Michael Van Busker and the whole board. So I feel like we're off to one fantastic and amazing start, but it's been because of all the hard work you guys put in, Michael. So, and Teresa Evans, thank you for sticking around this whole time, but, because we couldn't have done it without you. Michael, Mr. Van Busker, I mean, I'm sorry, I see you too much. What do you want to say about all that? Because, I mean, it's gotta be rewarding for you, but it's, I know it's been a lot of hard work, so, I mean, there's a lot of kudos to give, but you guys have really divided and conquered.
Yeah, it was, it was a group effort. We're not done at all. You know, the board, the board, I said, the, the board meetings are just so great. You know, those are, my goal is to get them back to an hour and a half, but we did get the last one just, just under that. But, you know, these have been two-hour-plus meetings, plus a lot of other meetings taking place to, to get everything done. But Joe hitting the ground running, that was one of the things as we were evaluating candidates, we were looking for the person who could really just jump in and, and, and run with this. One thing that, you know, was, was mentioned briefly, but staffing, you know, that's one of the things that very quickly Joe's gonna be evaluating. And then also, you know, opportunities to collaborate with some of our community partners on shared staffing arrangements. I mean, there's, there's some great opportunities there. So I, I think that's, you know, that's part of our challenge that we'll be working on over the next 90 days as he gets his feet on the ground.
All right. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. I wrote down a lot of words, and I want to tell each one of the people that presented in the organizations how impressed and proud I am of all of you and your hard work. But here are some of the things I wrote down that I love. Progress, dedication, commitment to greatness, collaboration, pride of our Lee's Summit, attraction of new business, the volunteers who have worked so relentlessly, and each one of you that did your presentation had beautiful smiling faces. I could tell you were dedicated and excited about what you're doing, and I just want to thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, it is actually surprised me how much I've enjoyed serving on the EDC board. Obviously, you, when you decided what councilmembers put on there, I was the skeptic, I think, that you put on, but...
We, we needed you to be...
But my, once I joined and once we made the decision to reengage in these negotiations and into a PSA, like, my goal is to see them be a success, and I feel like they're off to such a strong start. When you talk about how much has gotten done since last August or October, both, it impresses me, because it felt like we were just mired in nothing happening for two years, which is not all on the EDC shoulders, and, and I'm not gonna dig into it, I'm just saying I'm very impressed, once decisions were made, how rapidly progress has been made in terms of the bylaws, the new board, hiring a new president. I worried that we wouldn't have someone on board before the summer, and I'm, I'm really glad to see that such a strong candidate was found. I think it really does speak to the strength of our community that we had so many great applicants, and I appreciate how the board has been working under Mr. Van Busker's leadership to be active and to be transparent, that, for example, with hiring our new president, a lot of discretion was required, a lot of, of confidentiality of those applicants was required, but to the balance of that, but also being transparent with the board of who those applicants were, how they were being selected, giving everyone an opportunity to participate in that process, I think is gonna be a good template for going forward with the mission of the organization, that we're always balancing the need for participation and openness with the need for discretion, and I think it's, so far I've been impressed, and I'm really looking forward to what you're going to accomplish when you actually officially start, because it seems like you may be already started, yeah.
Two weeks. I'm starting a little.
Yeah, no, you, but it's, it's the right attitude to take. There's, there's a lot to learn, and also a lot of knowledge transfer, so I really appreciate that Teresa has been able to stay on this long, that there really was a worry last year that she has desperately wanted to retire for quite some time, and we were discussing, will we hire a consultant, what are we gonna do? We needed something in, in the interim, and she's been really gracious to continue working with the board and be flexible as we went through this process, so I want to publicly thank her as well. So I look forward to this, this next year. It's gonna be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Potem Lopez?
Thanks, Mayor. I've been sitting here just kind of biting my tongue all night, and it's kind of like, there's enough thank yous, like the Oscars or something here tonight, with all the presentations that were made, starting with Dave and Jennifer with the commissions. Thank you guys and for the presentations for all, everyone that's involved on those commissions. Goes without saying, you guys do amazing work. It's inspiring for us as policymakers that sit in committee meetings, and, and as we talked about the PSA organizations, all of your presentations were just amazing. Mr. Perry, Mike, thank you guys for what you spoke about tonight. Well, well thought, well stated. But all the PSAs, you know, we sit, we sit here as a council, again, and set policy, we work on budgets to divide up how much we're gonna divide among the different PSAs, and, you know, what's the best use of taxpayer money. And the mayor mentioned earlier, and it was mentioned earlier, that we, we were on a couple of different trips the last couple of weeks. We spent a day in Jeff City with, with all of our, our state reps, then went to DC last week, and spent some time with our representatives up in DC. And for us, we're up there like cheerleaders, and we've, we've got a whole business plan ready to go, talking about how great this community is, and it's easy for us to talk about it, but those of you that are experts in marketing and, and branding, I hope you made a video of tonight, because this, this, this video could be presented in any, on any one of those trips to Jeff City or DC. This is what Lee's Summit's about. It's people that care and that are engaged and love this community, and tonight was a perfect example of that. And for us, as, as again, the policymakers that, I won't say are involved in boring meetings, but we're, we're involved in committee meetings that the public could care less about, figuring out how we're gonna split the budget with staff, and do the right thing with each dollar that, that the city takes in. This validates tonight, all these presentations validate why we do what we do, and it's inspiring to us as well. So I just want to share that with you guys, and, and again, just thank everybody that spoke tonight. So thank you, guys, and welcome. Corey, welcome you as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk?
Thank you, Mayor. Definitely welcome, Joe and Cory, but we were sitting here and everybody was passing out the kudos, and it's awesome, and all the volunteers involved made me, just hit me about a story for Mr. Rogers, that I had a friend that came in from, they were from Colorado, out of, kind of south of Denver, and they went to Downtown Days, and they walked away by saying how safe they felt at one of our events. So kudos to all the volunteers, and chiefs, to all of our public service guys who take care of us. It's a great job, everybody, and thank you guys very much for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna do one more presentation before we take a break, before our public hearing, or at least, yeah, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a couple of public hearings, then we're gonna have a presentation, then we're gonna, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we got more work to do, but we want to do this clean team update, and then, and then we'll take a short recess. This time of year, this time of year, there often are times where groups, citizen groups will, will clean, but over the years, we've been trying to be what I would call it a hub, maybe, of information as to how you can volunteer, how you can participate, and then what can the city do. And I know Michael Park here, our Director of Public Works, has worked with city staff to put a website together, you'll probably mention that in a minute, but just trying to be, trying to coordinate all the, the efforts, as well as our intentions, things that we can do as council to keep, make, I'm sorry, Lee's Summit and keep it beautiful with regard to cleaning and, and litter and more, and we've, we've had tons and tons of conversations about it, and so this is our update for the year. Mr. Park?
Thank you, and man, really tough position to follow that set of presentations, wasn't it? That was amazing, the contributions they're having in this community, and welcome those, and new members, and Mr. Perry, I say, it's been many years, and I welcome him back, but you'll notice, one of the things on the list of tonight's agenda that didn't bring him here was a clean team update. I felt a little offended, so I'm gonna pivot. That was some incredible stuff you just heard, and, and we're moving to some more unsightly, more unpleasant topic of litter and how our corridors look and the aesthetics. So I now understand also why Mr. Dunning said try to keep this to about three to five minutes, no more, and we'll just kind of hit the highlights. This is our annual update. We'll focus on what the city's doing, I'll give you an update of what the state is doing, and then maybe a couple of other miscellaneous things, and kind of at that point, it'll open up for questions.
The state's doing something?
We, we have some reporting to make on that, which is great in our update.
I can't wait to hear. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, and, and just for everybody's awareness, and I know you all know, but for those that might be watching, there is a different set of maintenance responsibilities within our community. The state maintains the highways and the interchange areas and some of the outer roads, and the city is responsible for maintaining all the, the local roads, your main thoroughfares, and, and that's a big distinction that we need to acknowledge. And we will continue to do our operations, which is sweeping and picking up debris and managing mowing and weeding, that kind of thing, to keep our corridors looking nice. We also have an Adopt a Street program. We've gone through and revamped that program, updated the website, kind of cleaned it up, if you will, no pun intended for our clean team updates, but identified those that weren't participating and tried to rotate those out, make those corridors available for new engagements within the community. We do have a lot of major roadways where people could still volunteer, participate in our Adopt a Street program. We'll put up a sign, give you some acknowledgement and recognition, and it just requires four cleanings a year, which is pretty low commitment, but it makes a big difference in our community. We've also hosted a number of events. Recycle Fest is an annual event that we have that's coming up May 3rd, 9:00 to noon. That's out at the city maintenance facility. We've transitioned that now to our contracted operator that's out there running the construction demolition processing facility. They will now manage the Recycle Fest, Recycle Fest event. You can bring in a whole assortment, you can visit our website to see what all is taken in, but everything from shoes to bicycles, paper shredding, corks, anything and everything, pill bottles, you can bring them all out there and recycle, help keep our community cleaner in a green way. Stream Team, we have twice a year, we have a number of volunteers, typically around 50 plus, especially if you're a high school student looking for some community service hours, invite you out April 19th, 10:00 AM to noon at Deer Valley Park. They go and they clean up our streams, clean up those waterways, a lot of that debris makes its way into some of our reservoirs and lakes if we don't keep those clean. And then we'll be acknowledging Earth Day and Arbor Day proclamations in the coming month. Also acknowledge, last year we renewed our Tree City USA designation. So just a few things that we're doing here in the city. Some state operations, so they have contracted now I-470. I know last year that was a big contention where they were working on certain parts of Kansas City, some areas of Independence. Well, they have contracted I-470, so it is getting more frequent pickup by contract. I believe it's twice a month during its heavier seasons, and then once a month otherwise that they're picking up I-470. Still nothing on 50 Highway yet, and they will continue on their other corridors, they're, they clean up before they mow, and they mow three times a year, and that's essentially their schedule. They do it at the beginning of the year, kind of middle of the summer, and then before you head into winter. They did say the contractor out on I-470 is a little behind schedule due to the winter, and so they've got some catch-up. This is the worst time of year when you look at our corridors and our highways, the litter just shows itself. You know, you've still got little weeds and the snow has melted. So they said, just have a little patience, the contractors try to catch up.
Seventy mile an hour winds don't help either.
Yes, they don't help either. So they do a little bit of highway sweeping prior to the mowing when they do that, that pickup activity, and they ask that you just report it directly to MoDOT, especially those bulk items. You can also report them to our staff at Public Works, we'll carry that message to MoDOT, especially the, the larger items. If you see mattresses and tires, couches, those things that present a serious public safety issue along the highways, they're more prompt on responding to those calls, too. They have completely revamped, they have a Adopt a Highway program, which is very similar to our Adopt a Street program. It's now called Volunteer Pickup Program. They have really limited that scope to interchange areas, a little less risk for volunteers, and they, as part of the program update, they've updated their website and everything that goes along with their No, No More Trash campaign. And I've provided a couple of web links here for those to get involved, that in the Sponsor a Highway program is really where businesses can engage with MoDOT, they make a contribution to contract out. So if a business wanted to participate, I-470's not on the list, MoDOT's already contracting that, but 50 Highway could be, or an interchange. At this point, MoDOT said they've had no applicants from any business in Lee's Summit to participate in the Sponsor a Highway program. They have seen it in other communities. So that may be an opportunity where we can get out within the city of Lee's Summit, try to engage some of our businesses and see if they might...
We've got a new Economic Development Director, he can, he can recruit people for us.
We do. And there's the website there, and that's, again, I wanted to put this out there in case anybody wants to participate. It's also a great advertisement for your local business if you have adopted or sponsored a highway. Some other initiatives, I think Clean Team is a big support for the council priority goals in solid waste and beautification, and I think you'll see a lot more of how this contributes to those two goals as we move forward with those, those prerogatives throughout this coming year and years ahead. Enforcement, I know our police department has increased its attention to enforcement of like uncovered loads, where they're already doing enforcement activities, and so has Highway Patrol, and that leads me to a couple of House bills that are making their way through, and the state has asked us if we would help support these two House bills, House Bill 335. What that has done is helps Highway Patrol in particular assert offenses with regard to littering, and right now, the, the laws are so loose, it's really not much of a penalty for some of these uncovered loads, and so this bill is hopefully going to make it a lot better for prosecution of those offenses, and try to detract from the haulers or their companies or their drivers from creating offenses when they really know right now there's not a lot of penalty to it. The second is House Bill 336. They've asked for some support on this one. This is a fee-based promotion to help address littering, so it's a collection at the landfills on haulers who show up, and the collections, if this House bill were to advance and eventually be approved, is dedicated funding source by each fee collection to highway litter cleanup. So those two things could help to try to make some progress on the state side of addressing litter management. So with that out, just opening it up to any questions you might have, and hopefully I was right around five minutes or less.
Questions from council? You didn't stay under five minutes.
I, I tried, Mayor.
You, you, it's impossible for you to stay under five minutes.
I wanted to give kudos to everybody else.
Councilmember Funk?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just impressed that I beat Councilmember Shields first. That's kind of cool. Mr. Parks, is there a contact person for volunteers to clean up if someone from listening to us or watching us on TV or that we could pass along? Is there a contact for the city for volunteer cleanup?
Yes, they, they can reach out to Public Works at our email, or just call in at 969-1800, and we can arrange pickups without actually engaging into our Adopt a Street program.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. With the sponsoring a highway, is that something the city could do? Because we've talked about how we can't just take over MoDOT right-of-ways, but what could we do to maybe contract them? Could we just sponsor Highway 50?
We could, yeah. We could sign up for their program as a business, as the city of Lee's Summit.
But what kind of cost, or is that something maybe you could give us some information about later? I don't want to keep you here all night, but...
Yeah, we can share some cost information for that.
Okay. Yeah, I would love to know more about what we could do there as, as a city. Thank you.
And, and I believe some of that, that detail is on their website, as somebody, businesses might be interested, they can find that kind of cost information.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you for keeping the Clean Team initiative going. How, we've been doing this for about three years now?
Yeah, we started that about three years ago.
Yeah, so it's important to keep continuing, and obviously, things are changing, too, with MoDOT and other things, so the way they're, you know, so it's, it's good to get these updates and then also kind of stay, stay in alignment, so. stay in alignment, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to take a recess. Yeah. I'm going to take a recess. We've got a bit of work to do, so I'm going to give everybody about 15 minutes.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today, we're at Lee Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within the Lee Summit Fire Department station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training or during reports or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station 3, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing and as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is, at this specific station, is in charge of both the fire truck that's here as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally, for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms to write reports and we have additional training rooms and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to recognize that we work 48-hour shifts. So in the evenings, after 5:00, after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else, as long as we're not running calls. And this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great reason to know why we go to the grocery store. When you see fire trucks at the grocery store, what we're doing. Also, for two days, working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store and then we come in here and cook, just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift as well as their own pantry, and then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple of different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which again is important when we're here for 48 hours. The opportunity to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the kind of sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out to where our fire apparatus are, as well as kind of keeping it a little bit quieter for those people that have been up all night running calls. We have 11 bedrooms here at this station. And the reason we built it with so many bedrooms is we want to give ourselves as a city the opportunity to expand. So if we need to put another apparatus here or numerous other people working at this station that's already in place as far as infrastructure goes, and we don't need to go back and try to make it bigger or better, and that's really important for us, especially because the old station was so small. Back out on the apparatus floor, we have doors facilitated as many places as possible so that way when we're sleeping at night and a call comes out, we can make our way out fairly quickly to get out onto the truck if we need to and run a call. On the other side of the station, we kind of have other stuff that we may want to keep separated if we want to. Physical fitness is very important to us as firefighters. So in order to better ourselves and make sure we're as healthy as we can to do this job, we have our own gym facility here that we kind of go throughout the day when we can and get an opportunity to come in and work out. Our goal, when we run calls and we get back to the station after calls, our goal is to get ready to go back as soon as we can to run another call. So we have the opportunity or capability here to fill up our air tanks. When you see firefighters, where the big air tanks on their backs, and they use those in a fire, we can come back and fill those up and make sure that we're ready to go again when we're wanting to go run another call. We have our own workshop here. We work on a lot of our tools and making sure that everything's clean and operational, and this gives us the capability to do that. Again, to make sure that we have everything we need and we're as capable as we can to run a calls throughout the city. Cancer prevention is very important in the fire service right now. Because of that, we have an extractor machine. And what this does is gives us the capability, when we come back from a fire, we can put our bunker gear into this machine and get all that really nasty crud off of our gear. Again, kind of getting back to that cancer prevention mode, allowing us to be as clean as we possibly can for the next call. Finally, is our bunker gear room. We each have our own individual locker. This gives us the opportunity to store our gear when we're not here working in between shifts, as well as keep a clean extra set on here in case we do run a fire and we need to clean our current gear. Typically, this is where your day starts off at the fire station. You come in and get your gear and put it on wherever you're working that day, and then you end the same way, bringing your stuff back to your locker to go home after working. This is Med 3. This ambulance just currently moved into the station from Station 7. Station 3, since we've had it built, has turned into one of our busiest stations in the city, therefore, we want it to provide the best care and the closest units we could. So we moved one of our ambulances up and this became Med 3 for this particular instance. Out of this station, we also have Pumper 3, and that's the fire apparatus that they utilize to run the calls on this west end of the city. And the last vehicle that you see is the chief's vehicle. We have two shift chiefs on shift every day, and they split the city. And this chief running out of this station typically covers the west and south area of the city, while our chief of Station 2 covers kind of that northeast section of our city, and they divide it up evenly.
Thank you for going on a tour with us today. If you have any other questions about the Lee Summit Fire Department, please go to our webpage at lsfire.net or follow us on Facebook at Lee Summit Fire Department.
Thanks for joining us on the tour.
Hello and welcome to Meet Me at the Market, your development update on Green Street. Green Street Market is enclosed in exterior work including roofing, glazing, tenting, and brick facade will be added soon. Wooden panels are up where glass doors will be, and workers are constructing utilities inside. When completed, a catering kitchen and concession area will be on the southwest side of the building, and bathrooms will be on both ends. Construction of the outdoor canopy adjacent to Green Street Market is ongoing. The steel beams and crossbows will support a translucent polymer roof covering the Green Street lawn, offering year-round programmed activities, events, and performances. Concrete has been poured in front of City Hall and pavements, hardscapes, and landscaping will soon begin for Green Street growth. The Streetscape Pavilion will serve as the gateway to Green Street with an art walk featuring art from acclaimed artists, an immersive kids playground, outdoor seating, and gathering spaces. More public art is coming. Four local artists have been selected for the City Hall public parking garage, and three finalists have been chosen for the digital mural for Green Street Market. Be on the lookout for an announcement very soon. Third Street from Douglas to Green intersection is expected to open on January 30th, followed by Green Street to the Johnson Street intersection in March. That's it for this episode of Meet Me at the Market. For more information on the project, visit citive ls.net/greenstreet.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
The city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard.
We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them and say, 982, then route.
Officers in route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network, who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, how can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago, my personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So I had a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, and getting to know her story, and getting to know who comes around and sees you. Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into the additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
You can make the difference in somebody's life.
If you're trying to get in the fire and need that service, Lee Summit is probably the top name.
On a daily basis, we are tasked with an incredible task. So we're trying to keep it a relaxed environment.
As a new person, you are constantly on edge, learning.
Morning will look typical, coming in, getting a report from the shift that's going off, get our truck checks done.
Our citizens trust us and believe in us by providing amenities like our gear, our stations.
They build it to accommodate getting to a call, but also having a home. State-of-the-art weight equipment.
Individual bunk rooms.
Downtime areas.
Breakfast and dinners together.
Cook together. Get to know one another.
Train together.
Like a brother knows a brother and a sister knows a brother. Fanter back and forth, but when the tones go off, they go to work.
We're here for 48 hours, so it can happen at any time. You can be in the gym, you can be in the middle of the night, you can be cooking.
Stop what you're doing and listen.
Wherever we are in the station.
People will stop what they're doing and listen, finding out which station it is.
What is the nature of the call?
EMS or...
What apparatus? Where are we going?
It's in my district.
Can be on the highway, northbound, southbound, westbound.
Am I assisting somebody?
Expectation.
What gear is on?
Other lives involved. That adrenaline dump.
Jettison rash.
Pants on, coats on, getting in the truck, we're mentally focused, geared up, paying attention to where we're going. Then we have a game plan that happens in the truck. The officer can give direction, and the dispatcher will update you. The officer will listen, the driver will listen, we get all in the same payday when we get to the call, we can go to work. It's only in degrees of severity, structure fire, swift water rescue.
EMS.
Car accident.
Technical rescue.
Paramedic team. Equipment the fire department offers us is top-notch, from ring cutter to extrication equipment, state-of-the-art stuff, great trucks.
Tablet, Lucas device, battery-powered pot.
The right tools, the right training. The learning does not stop in the academy.
Building blocks continue, call after call. Opportunities to grow. Started out as a firefighter, paramedic, moved to the rank of engineer, paramedic, most recently at the qualification of acting captain.
Firefighter, engineer, recently promoted to captain.
Promoted to paramedic since I've been here.
I'll be honest, it's scary sometimes. You're the one back there, that person is having a bad day, and they're counting on you.
We practice these scenarios over and over. So when someone has an emergency, we can channel those energies, minimizing any more injury. And then when it's over, we'll say, hey, how did we do? How is everyone doing? And we'll have frank conversations back at the station. The station assignment for us is a 48 on, 96 off.
The four days off is probably one of the greatest things ever.
Help us improve our sleep patterns, wellness, mental health. It gives you many, many options.
I have a small, little 15 acres that we like to hobby farm, backpacking in the spring and in the fall, mountain biking when the weather's good.
I have a 21-month-old at home, so I feel like I get to work a full-time job and then on the four days off, be a stay-at-home mom as well.
Spend a little more time with my kids, travel around the world. I was able to take my oldest daughter in a trip of a lifetime. We went to Europe for 22 days. I got hired to help others. Helping others also helped me see my children grow, see my family grow, see my career grow, and me grow as a person.
People that are in the industry know the name of Lee Summit Fire Department. Every fire academy knows it, every other fire department knows it. If you're looking for a job in the fire service, Lee Summit is the place to be.
That's who you want to be, somebody who can make positive change in all the human beings alive.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers...
Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in, and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow, green, whatever, and basically what it--
Okay, welcome back, everyone. We're going to get this meeting back underway, bringing it to order at this point. We have a public hearing tonight. We have two. So I'm going to get right to it. I'm closing the regular session and opening a public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 6A Sewer Rates and Charges. Would all those, or excuse me, I believe the city of Lee Summit would be considered the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk? All right, thank you. Mr. Eisen, are you presenting?
Scott Eisen, Chief Counsel at Infrastructure and Recreation for the city. I'd like to start by moving to admit cities exhibit number one through three and the evidence for the purpose of tonight's hearing.
Please enter into the record exhibit one through three.
So tonight's hearing is our annual sanitary sewer rate hearing. We hold this every year because we have to, because Missouri statute says before we establish any sanitary sewer charges, we have to have a public hearing. And changing sanitary sewer charges also means establishment. The city sets its sanitary sewer charges in order to sustain the utility, and they use the methodology based upon the strategic plan, the wastewater master plan, and the city's comprehensive plan. Now normally, shortly after we do this public hearing, you get the schedule of fees, and the schedule of fees contains the sanitary sewer charges that are to be changed. However, sometimes we can't quite coordinate those at the same time because I have to publish this hearing in February. So we're doing this hearing a little bit before the ordinance on the schedule of fees. So there won't be anything to vote on tonight because there's not a schedule of fees ordinance tonight. That will come in a future council meeting. But basically, to summarize the changes to the sanitary sewer charges and bretton voices here, if you want to deeper dive into them, the first one is going to be the tap fee. The tap fee is a one-time fee that comes into play whenever somebody either establishes sanitary sewer or when they increase the capacity. To give you an example of that change, the most common is a 5/8 by a 3/4 inch line. That will increase by $113 in the proposed schedule of fees that will come forth at a future council meeting. In addition to that, we have the monthly charges that appear on every user's utility bill. Those will increase by 4%. Now, the 4% increase won't come until 2029, and it'll be over the 2028 rate. Because as most of you are aware from the budgetary process, in order for our users of the utility to estimate what their charges will be in the future, we set rates five years in advance. So what will show up on the schedule of fees here in about a month or so will be the sanitary sewer rates for 2029 for those monthly charges. And again, those will increase from 4% over the rate that was set for 2028. These changes were reviewed and recommended by the Water Utilities Advisory Board earlier this year and recommended that they be implemented, and the Water Utilities has asked that they be implemented. And with that, I'm free to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Eisen? What action do you need us to take?
No action tonight. We're just required to have this public hearing, which we're having now, and then later on you'll get the schedule of fees at a future council meeting.
Okay. Are there any, is there anyone here that wishes to speak about this application or this public hearing about this topic, for or against? Any additional questions from council? Eisen or anybody? Mr. Niden, okay. Hearing no further testimony. I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Any council discussion? Good, seeing none, we will move on to the next public hearing. So I'm closing the public hearing in the matter of, or closing the regular session and opening the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 6B. The rezoning from Ag to CP2 and Preliminary Development Plan, View High Sports Complex, 3350 Northwest Ashhurst Drive, Engineering Solutions LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk? All right, before we begin, Mr. Slisch, Mr. Funk needs to make a statement.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be recusing from voting on this part of this application as I seen it at the Planning Commission and voted on it there.
Thank you, sir.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, Matt Slish, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. With me this evening, I have a whole slew of guests with me to answer any questions we have. So we have the architect with us, we have the contractor, we have the developer, we have the attorneys, and we have the church. So we have everybody who could possibly answer any question you may have. The property is generally located southeast corner of View High Drive and Chipman Road. The Summit Church was constructed in about 2015. This is the south 15 acres, so Ashhurst Drive that connects subdivision to the east to View High Drive, was just constructed when Chipman Road improvements were being done. On the Ignite Master Plan, it's the area in red, so it's generally an area that the city had the foresight that that corridor between the Paragon Star Activity Center and the new Longview Activity Center was ultimately going to develop in something along that View High corridor. The View High corridor is kind of an interesting one because that is the westerly boundary of Lee Summit. So essentially, the east side of View High Drive is the end of Kansas City and the beginning of Lee Summit. So there's some jurisdictional things that we've worked out to get to this project at this point. So part of our request is to rezone the property. Currently, it's zoned agricultural, so back in 2015 when we did the church, because it was a religious facility, there was no need to do a rezoning, and we were able to develop the church, knowing that at some point, the remaining ground out there would bring forward a development plan that met whatever it was wanting to be on that side. So the idea, just to meet the Ignite Comp Plan, we're asking for a CP2 zoning district on the south 15 acres, plus a two-acre parcel kind of sitting up there on the north side of Ashhurst Drive. If you're sitting down at the southwest corner of our site, looking to the northeast, so essentially that is our corner looking up onto our site, there's an existing row of trees along the entire southerly boundary. Those are intended to stay. Along our frontage area along View High Drive, we would be on the other side of that large tree mass. The intent is to try to maintain as much of those trees that can be cleaned up. In that area, there'll be a new bike trail and some things that'll happen in construction-wise, but we believe we can maintain a good amount of the existing vegetation. This then is on the exact other side, inside the residential subdivision, at the termination point of Ashhurst before it was extended. So this would be our easterly boundary, looking back to the west. And again, all the existing trees that are adjacent to these residences will be maintained and left in their true form. So the site that we're proposing, so again, on the westerly side is View High, to the north is Chipman, further north is 470, the Summit Church that exists today. The proposal is we have a future use that will show up, that'll be some type of a two-acre commercial use that we have yet to identify, so that's just part of the process of knowing that there are ancillary uses that will be needed or could be utilized out there in this area. The primary project is this large sports facility. The large sports facility is 150,000 square feet, plus some office space, kind of in a two-story manor on the northwest portion of the site. On the easterly side of the site is an indoor full-size soccer field. Internally, then, on kind of the west side is a series of sports courts that could be utilized for volleyball, pickleball, basketball on the inside. Exterior, then, we have five pickleball courts, and again, another outdoor full-size soccer field. Indoor, in the additional uses in that office space and those other office rooms or those rooms down there are places for a small eating establishment or small food beverage type of opportunities in there. There would be sports rehab, there would be training facilities, there would be places to have kids' games, parties, activities to kind of handle in this facility. Again, thinking if you're a parent and you're taking your kid to sports activities night after night, it gives you an opportunity to bring the family and do some things, or if you're in there doing sports, you have the opportunity to have some other specialized training and activity as you are sitting there. From a development standpoint, again, on the easterly side and the southerly side, the existing vegetation is going to be maintained in its entirety, and then additionally, we're going to add a significant amount of landscaping along Ashhurst, around the parking areas, and again, along the northerly drive that will be constructed up to Chipman. So the site currently has Ashhurst Drive that exists, that was built with the city's project. We are developing the road that goes to the north that connects up to Chipman Highway, so or Chickman Road, so you'd have an access point to get out of the site in multiple locations. As we start to look at what the options for access to the site are, the signalized access on Chipman that is currently being finalized, full access up on the north access point, the access out onto View High will be right in, right out. As well, there will be a southbound left from View High onto the site. The only movement from this location on Ashhurst you will not be able to make is a westbound left turn. So if you're coming out of Ashhurst, you're left out. The idea, and we've had conversations with the neighbors about this, we've had conversations with city staff, our own traffic engineers about this, is the concern of the residents that the traffic will start to migrate through the neighborhood. It is the opinion of staff, and they can speak for themselves, obviously, but our traffic engineer and our studies to evaluate, that a majority of the traffic will come to the site from the 470 corridor, coming even from a Lee Summit or regional areas coming towards it. They'll come from the 470, down View High, turn onto Chipman and access the site, and again, then leaving in that same fashion. If they're going to get up to Chipman, they would utilize our public access road and going to the east to Chipman or back out to View High to get to that point. Again, minimizing, in our opinion and the traffic study's opinion, the impact to any of the existing residents to the east. Again, the architect's here to speak through any of the architectural features you'd like to have, but it's a good mixture of materials across the entire site. So this would be our westerly side, kind of our lower sloping area where this would be the offices, the fields, and everything else would be elevated down below this elevation, so you'll start to see our masked-up area on the easterly side. That is the sports, the soccer field area where you have your higher volume space. So as you're looking, this would be the easterly side of the site, kind of looking back towards the residences. This is what you would see from the View High elevation, kind of on the westerly side. Again, starting to see that higher band of the volume space where the soccer field would be back behind that initial lower area. This, then, you're starting to see that change. So again, as you're looking at it, on the left side of this page, on the upper elevation, this would be the View High side, and then this would be the residential side to the east. Again, looking from west side of it, east side of it, this being the south face, this then being on the other side of it, looking back at it. So again, then, or this one, this would be View High on the right side of the page, looking back to the other side of it where the residences would be on this side. So you're starting to see that elevation change, how that soccer field's going to get embedded basically into the grade, keeping the volume and the space feel of the facility lower near the View High corridor. Some internal pictures, you can start to see some of the check-ins, some of the feel, some of the idea of what it will feel like to be inside the facility. You're starting to see that two-story space where you'll have the offices, again, your sports rehabs, your available spaces to utilize inside the facility. Full-size soccer field with the overlooking views from the upper portions, looking onto the inside sites. Then now, when you're on the other side of it, looking at the sports courts, it'll be a mixed use for volleyball, pickleball, basketball, any number of sports times it'll be used throughout the year. We did hold a neighborhood meeting up at the Summit Church, had a great attendance from a number of the residences. A number of the things, I think, or a lot of the uses or questions that typically happen in a use like this, it's a use that hasn't had anything happening out in that corridor for quite some time. The Summit Church came 10 years ago, and then this is kind of the next thing out in that corridor. So it's kind of been, as illustrated on the Ignite's Comp Plan, the idea that this would be kind of that commercial corridor, kind of that westerly side of Lee Summit. So we discussed some of the ideas of what could be there, what should be there, and how that could work, and how this would work and interact with the church operations, how this would work kind of in a complimentary use, how we'll utilize some of the shared parking between the church site and our site to maximize the facility, but also maximize the site as it could be used. It started to have conversations then about the soccer fields and when they could be used, and the lighting, and so the outdoor soccer field, the pickleball, potential noise and things like that. And so we acknowledged those, we said that every one of those situations would meet all city code, and plus, because of our space or distance from the residential facility, which I'll show you in a minute, we believe those are addressed. We had some conversations on stormwater, we had some conversations on just general traffic and the pieces of it. Certainly can go through any of those as you want. I think some of the residents are here to have some of their comments this evening as well. So one of the comments that does keep coming up is the conversations about the pickleball that's sitting on the easterly side, an outdoor facility court. And everything that we've studied and looked through, the idea of the site, from the easterly property line, it's 310 feet to our soccer field, it's 570 feet to the pickleball court. So based on the calculations of what a decibel level pickleball would generate at 570 feet, the noise has muted basically down to a very manageable volume. Again, then, assuming that this soccer field is utilized for youth activities and not necessarily large volumes of people, but again, parents and their kids and a couple teams going on out there, an estimated decibel value was reached. And again, then, by the time we got to the property line at 310 feet away, it's within restraints of what it needs to be by the time it gets to that point. And all of these calculations exclude the idea of the existing vegetation that sits out there, exclude the idea that there is a large vast void of space that has a big ravine down in there. So there's a number of things that I think if actually calculated once completed, the decibel levels are likely to be even lower than what is shown there. So as we talked about, we went and pulled up city code, and so per city code, there are your decibel levels as you're sitting at a residential use category, receiving the noise, and you can see that our decibel levels calculated are below anything that would be considered a concern for the neighbors. Some of the neighborhood concerns or comments that we had were some of the lighting, so the parking lot lighting that we would have up on the parking lot there, there will be field lights that would be associated with it. And again, then, we went through and showed the calculations that there are limits in there for what we will adhere to, there are limits for lighting levels at foot candles at the property lines, and all of these will be met and not have an impact on the residences and will meet code. There are a couple modifications that we are asking for. There's a modification because this is a CP2 zone district, and there's residential on the east and south that technically needs a high-impact screening, plus a six-foot opaque fence. It's our opinion that it would be more important to leave all of the existing vegetation that is along the south and east property line, and we've also enhanced the amount of landscaping that we provided along that south corridor in the attempt to remove the need for the fence. It's our opinion that a six-foot fence doesn't do a whole lot in that area to separate our use from their use, the building will be above it, but the existing vegetation being maintained will certify, or will serve as the requirement for that fence or that buffer to keep a separation between the CP2 and the residential zoned areas. And then again, on the easterly side, due to our distance away and the existing vegetation that will be maintained, again, I just don't know that it makes sense to try to force a fence on the easterly side. Then the other one is on the use of metal panels. Architectural metal panels in the code have a series of limitations on what can be allowed on the sides and the pieces of it. Due to the vast amount of space of this building, the use of architectural metal panels seemed appropriate for this use, and again, the architect can talk through any of these pieces, but we are asking for an increase to the allowable use of architectural metal panel across the facility. So we will be here for any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. We'll do the staff presentation, and then we'll come back to you.
Okay, good evening, Adair Bright Senior Planner. I would like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 22.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, 1 through 22.
The applicant is requesting approval of a rezoning from Ag to CP2 for the areas outlined in red, which is about 17.18 acres, and a preliminary development plan for the areas with the blue hatch. On the site, south of northwest Ashhurst Drive, an approximately 164,000-square-foot building is proposed to house a sports complex consisting of one indoor soccer field and six indoor basketball courts, or 12 volleyball courts. The site will also include one outdoor soccer field and five outdoor pickleball courts. The site containing the Summit Church includes a parking lot expansion to accommodate additional parking for the sports complex. The rezon-- The rezoning will also cover a future two-acre parcel for commercial development, which is being shown as conceptual in the submitted plan set. At that time of development, the commercial site will require a preliminary development plan and a final development plan. The subject property is zoned Ag, and the areas with the red border are proposed to be rezoned as CP2. Properties to the north and south are also zoned Ag and include a church to the north and a single-family residence to the south. The property to the east is zoned R1 and includes single-family residences. To the west, across northwest View High Drive, is within Kansas City city limits and is zoned R80, which is a residential zoning district. The property contains parkland owned by the federal government. The future land use map designates the subject property as commercial. The Ignite Conference of Plan specifically identifies commercial or commercial recreation facility as an anticipated use under the commercial land use category. The proposed development supports two identified focus areas of the Conference of Plan, namely quality of life and sustainable development or environment. Each focus area has goals and objectives that establish a long-term framework to direct growth and change for the city. As it relates to the quality of life plan element, View High Sports Complex offers programming centered around health and wellness. In addition to the sports field and courts, the development includes a physical rehabilitation office and speed and agility training. As it relates to the sustainable environment plan element, the proposed project includes preservation of existing mature vegetation along the southern and eastern boundaries. The site is proposed to contain one building that is about 164,000 square feet. The applicant is requesting approval of an alternate parking plan and has submitted a parking determination memo outlining their reasoning and research behind their proposed parking count. The provided parking memo suggests a requirement of 90 spaces per soccer field and 48 spaces per basketball court to equal 468 spaces. The applicant is providing 300 spaces onsite and 201 spaces to the north through an expansion of the church's parking lot. Staff compared the provided memo with the Institute of Transportation Engineers parking generation manual, I'm sorry, and is agreeable to the requirement identified by the applicant. The most similar use identified in the ITE manual is the soccer complex use, which noted 74 parking spaces per soccer field at peak demand. In close relation is the Athletic Club Land Use Code, which notes a peak demand of 17 stalls per tennis court. Basketball or volleyball courts were not identified in the manual, so staff used the most similar. Staff is also agreeable to the proposed shared parking agreement between the church and the sports complex. The proposed building meets all required setbacks for the CP2 zoning district along with the condition outlined in UDO Section 6.430 for the proposed use, which requires the front entrance be at least 300 feet away from any residential use or district. For the PDP, a photometric or lighting plan was not required but will be reviewed with the FDP. Given that modifications are not being requested to the lighting standards, the applicant will be required to comply with the UDO or propose an amended PDP with modifications, which would be required to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and the governing body. The proposed building includes a mix of translucent panels, glass, and metal panels. The metal panel usage ranges from 67% to 92%, with the highest usage on the rear of the building or to the south. The UDO was recently amended in December of 2024 to allow for metal as an approved material up to a certain percent, since the applicant is proposing more than 40% metal and modification is being requested. The frequency of use in architectural metal panel systems as a primary or prominent building material has increased in newer developments throughout the city for uses that include restaurants, banks, offices, auto dealerships, churches, and schools. Staff believes the proposed use of metal panels on the building to be compatible with adjacent existing development. Through the PDP, the applicant is also requesting a modification to UDO Section 8.900, which addresses the high-impact buffer and screening requirements. The UDO states when CP2 is adjacent to R1 and Ag, a high-impact buffer screen must be provided, which includes a six-foot-high masonry wall or opaque vinyl fence, or a three-foot-high berm along with low-impact screening. This would apply to both the southern and eastern buffers. The applicant is proposing to preserve the existing mature vegetation and install additional evergreens and deciduous trees in lieu of the fence wall or berm. Staff is supportive of the proposed modification as we feel the mature existing vegetation would provide a better visual and spatial buffer than could be achieved with a physical structure. The proposed development will be accessed from three drives off northwest Ashurst Drive. The traffic impact study performed by Kimley Horn and Associates identifies several road improvements at the intersection of northwest View High Drive and northwest Ashurst Drive, as well as the requirement to construct a north-south roadway from the existing stub road south of northwest Chipman, which is shown on the drawing as northwest Summit Drive. Other improvements include constructing a median break on northwest View High Drive to restrict access onto northwest Ashurst, to a left-in, right-in, right-out movement, constructing a 200-foot-long southbound left-turn lane on northwest View High Drive at northwest Ashurst, and lastly, constructing a 150-foot-long northbound right-turn lane on northwest View High Drive at northwest Ashurst. Additional improvements required include a 10-foot-wide shared-use path along northwest View High Drive and sidewalks along both sides of the street for northwest Ashurst. A neighborhood meeting was held on December 2nd, 2024 as part of the project, and 18 members of the public attended. Some of the questions were related to the bike lanes along View High, sidewalk extension along Ashurst, retaining the existing trees, site layout and design related to lighting and amplification, operational characteristics and potential users, traffic, and compatibility with adjacent land uses. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on January 23rd, 2025, where eight members of the public voiced concerns and asked questions similar to those mentioned at the neighborhood meeting. With the conditions of approval as outlined here and in the staff letter, the application meets the goals of the Ignite Conference of Plan and the requirements of the UDO, and I am here for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff or applicant? Not seeing any yet, but I'll just start us off to get us going. Right, what, on that 200-foot southbound lane, like a long ways, I just want to make sure because this is a big facility. They're going to have a lot of, they're going to have a lot of people inside. I want to make sure that that is long enough.
That is what was required and noted in the traffic study by the traffic engineers. I'm sure that Matt could probably talk more to that or Susan.
Matt who? Oh, Matt Schlicht?
Yeah.
Mr. Schlicht. 200-foot, so, I mean, we, this is a pretty big driver, 164,000 square feet, and it's not going to be full of equipment or storage, it's going to be full of people. So we just don't want everything backed up on View High that one way. You've got the right in, right out. So that eliminates the congestion of, you know, people trying to go the wrong, you know, cross, crossing each other in that lane, which is great. But 200 feet, is that, is that enough?
Oh, yeah. So that was provided in the traffic study that was reviewed by staff. So Kimley Horn did it based on analysis of how many people would come and utilize the facility, and then based on the idea that some will be coming down View High and coming through that southbound left, and some will be turning at Chipman, coming in our north-south collector side of it.
Well, that's true.
And so.
Some will come through, yeah, that's true. People from Lee Summit would come through Chipman, and they would come through Third Street.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, based on that distribution of traffic, then there's a certain amount that is put in there for that queuing length, which creates that distance. And so, based on that, they create an appropriate level of service and then identify that that length will work. So, yeah, based on the traffic study, they believe that is a correct amount.
Park, you want to add to it?
Michael Park, Director of Public Works. It's also the City of Kansas City's condition that they've asked us to place on the development. As a good working relationship we have with our adjacent jurisdictions, we fully consider that. I think normally, on our standards, it would be a longer left-turn lane, but it would also be more prevalent at like a traffic signal location or somewhere where that traffic has to stop, and so there's more opportunity for those cars to queue longer, as opposed to this intersection where they really just have to wait for a gap. There is no signal, there's no stop, they're just moving so it can carry a lot more traffic through a shorter turn lane.
Just, it's just more of a on-the-hour type of, like, everybody's going to come and go at one time because of ballgames and such, so. South View High, going south on View High is not that congested. I'm just, you know, we could always address issues 10 years from now, you know. Want to make sure that we're thinking all that through, so. Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, and I just want to piggyback off of what you were just talking about, so if you could come back, Mr. Park. So I know that that's Kansas City's road, and I know that everybody's super happy about those bike lanes, but how is this going to work with those bike lanes?
So I sense some sarcasm in that question. Super happy about bike lanes, right? So we are also with an understanding, and actually, the Paragon Star development just to the north, at the interchange at 470, has been working with City of Kansas City on a plan to revert back to four-lane View High, which supports a much longer-term plan for arterials through Kansas City and Lee Summit. Part of that plan, which you see in the conditions here, is to create a 10-foot-wide shared-use path on the east side. There's already a shared-use path on the west side of View High. It's a puzzle of a lot of different projects, building together a longer-term vision of what this corridor will be. So in the interim, there will still be bike lanes until we can replace the bike lanes with off-road bike facilities on both sides of View High, much like what is being prepared currently. I believe some of the construction is actually occurring by Paragon Star, just to the north.
Yeah, I just drove up that road today, actually, on my way here, because 470 was backed up, so I tried to get off that road as soon as possible. And a lot of the sidewalk on that side.
The east side.
Is coming, like, when you come up the hill off 470, is coming on well. So that's, the plan then is to shift the bicycles off of the road and onto that large sidewalk.
Correct. It's been a recommendation of Modaf, Federal Highway Administration, I think city staff, when you look at the speed and volume of View High and its long-term volume and support that it has for both communities, to take those on-road bike facilities and make them off-road bike facilities where you have 10-foot-wide shared-use paths on both sides. So essentially, you've got bicycle tracks that are running up and down this major arterial.
So this will pretty much get that east side going pretty well, except for then where it turns back into residential.
Correct. And so the bike lanes terminate at 109th Street already.
Okay.
They don't continue south of there. It's still four-lane from 109th Street all the way down into City Lee Summit, there at Third Street. There's already, within the 109th Street north, I believe the west side already has the path. Between Paragon Star, potentially this development, if supported, and additional development, as you see, there's still some lots that have not been built out. I think that that vision will come to fruition.
For the east side, but the west side as well, you think?
West side's already done.
All the way up and down?
I believe that's true. I know for sure it is at least Chipman north, all the way through the interchange, and I believe it is also present there, south of Chipman, to 109th.
Okay.
Okay, I'm getting Mr. Dunning giving me the nod of correct.
Okay, yeah, we're looking at it here, too.
I should know, I drive the corridor like every day, so I just don't pay attention to it.
Okay, so it's not going to make safety worse for the bike riders, it's.
No, the intent is to make it safer.
Well, always, the intent is always to make things better, right?
But there's going to be a period of time where you're going to have on-road bike lanes, and you're going to have a patchwork of sidewalk and shared-use path on the east side, and shared-use path that already exists contiguous on the west side.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Schlicht, this, just a softball question, but just to kind of clear, just to be clear about it. I see in here that it says you've got shared parking, so you've got an arrangement. Because a big facility like this, you always have to worry about, again, with all these teams and people spill over, but you already have an agreement in place, the applicant does, with the church.
Yeah, and so what we did is in our traffic state, how we kind of, our traffic count of how we decided to do parking side of it, is that onsite, we think that a majority of the uses that'll be onsite will satisfy it. But then we've worked with the church to develop another segment of parking up on the south side of their facility that would serve us during high switcher flows, but then also the church could utilize during some of their higher event flows for some of their church services as well. So it seemed like a good opportunity for both of us to win, and they are here, but yes, we've worked out an agreement, ready for the approval of this that'll create the approval of that.
Okay. And then, stay on this page, a couple more questions, even though you covered it, I just want to turn it into layman's terms. You've got a soccer field there, you've got the pickleball courts, you've got quite a bit of feed area or whatever you want to call it, brush area there. What's the blue area?
The detention facility.
So you're taking all that, and you're saying it's 310 feet from the pickleball court to the residences?
310 feet from the soccer field, it's actually 570 feet from the pickleball.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not as concerned on the soccer field.
Yeah, then.
To cheer, but you're talking probably practices back here, not games?
You may have some games as time goes on, but again, it's youth sports, so it's a 11 v. 11, so you've got a couple extra kids, you've got 30 parents, 40 parents, it's not.
Then go to your slide where it talks about the decibel level. Yeah. So you're talking at 310 feet away, it's 40 decibel, which is, because we've had enough of these conversations over the years, that's a dishwasher sound.
It's quiet, and so we've also gone through and done some other research that was specific to pickleball courts, and typically, that 400 and 500-feet range is kind of what most cities have adopted as being a distance that pickleball is no longer any kind of a noise that becomes a nuisance, it's less of a, just a, you know.
But we don't have, we don't have that policy.
Right. But again, as we started developing this project, we looked through many other places.
We probably need to look at having a policy, having a policy at this point.
But again, for your guys' perspective, you do have a policy on down, the decibel limits on what you guys are allowing in your code, and so that's what we did, the calculation forced to illustrate that we're well below it.
Very good, sir, thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. So for the outdoor facility, so the soccer field and the pickleball, what hours of operation will those be?
You know, we talked about this a little bit at the Planning Commission, and I don't know that we have an exact hours of operations, you know. So what we did bring in was we had the conversation of what your code allows, and it has the time limits that are associated with it. We talked a lot about what legacy park out there that's directly adjacent to residential neighbors, and I think that 10:30 is kind of that cutoff time. I think at Planning Commission, we tried to refrain from setting a specific time today, but certainly said that we'd meet all of the code and requirements and follow anything that the Parks Department uses out there at Legacy. But again, you know, it's a seasonal type use, as we've kind of talked about, so pickleball and soccer are going to have a very specific time period that they're not going to get used, and so lights won't be out there, the noise won't be out there. But then, you know, likely in the spring and summer and some of the fall, they'll likely play. But again, it's youth sports, you know, so there aren't going to be many games that are happening into the late hours of the evening, because just like most youth sports are going to wrap up in a timely manner, I would say. So I hesitate to say that we have a timeframe, but I think it's reasonable to assume that anything that happens out of Legacy would be well within those confines.
And so just thinking outdoors well, thinking nighttime play when we're out on soccer fields, they have the big lights, those won't affect the neighbors either, right? Because they'll be far enough away to where it won't.
Correct. And so what I did is I highlighted inside the city's code about the height allowance of the light poles, and then the light levels at the property lines. And so those will be directional lights that'll go down, so there will be a glow, but by the time it gets to the property line, those will meet all city codes and essentially be down to zero foot candles.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to, next thing, public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? First, please come forward. And then we, I know there's a couple people here, maybe more, I'm not sure. As far as speaking in opposition to this, please come forward. One of you, please come forward.
Andrew Elson, 504 Northwest Timber Ridge Trail. I've actually got a prepared statement that I'm going to read, and actually, you hit on it earlier with the policy, that's where I'm going to get to. But for the record, I'm against all of this development. A large four-story building is simply out of. A large four-story building is simply out of place at this location, along with the very real traffic concerns where extra cars will be traveling in front of homes that do not have sidewalks. This type of development belongs closer to Paragon Star, or with all the other four-story buildings over by the airport. Other recent similar developments are not built this close to residential with street directly connecting them. Those include RecPlucks in West Des Moines, Blue Hawk in Overland Park, and Home Field in Kansas City, Kansas. The Ignite Plan carves out this commercial 40-acre location, surrounded by residential, with sticks out like a big red sore thumb. It's red on the map. Ultimately, our greatest concern is the noise pollution from the planned inclusion of five outdoor pickleball courts. UDO Section 6.1110 states a setback is required for residential purposes so that noise, traffic generation, and other effects will not adversely impact the residential development. This needs to be upheld here, because where else will it? Across the country, pickleball courts have resulted in numerous noise violations, multiple lawsuits, and the closing of courts because of the noise of the game. Most often, in these cases, the proximity of the pickleball courts to residential neighborhoods, combined with the type of noise, is cited as the reasons. The introduction of highly impulsive noise into residential neighborhoods that is consistent and persistent is a new phenomenon. Pickleball courts produce up to 900 pops per hour per court. With five outdoor pickleball courts planned, this is potentially 4,500 pops per hour, 40,000 to 50,000 pops per day. I actually contend that the decibel calculations presented to you earlier are blatantly wrong. There is information available, including a New York Times article stating the sound is 70 decibels at 100 feet. Using commonly available calculators, this then calculates out to 54.9 decibels at 570 feet. And at the other end of the neighborhood, 1,500 feet away, it is still 46.5 decibels. Pickleball is a high pitch with a frequency of about 1.2 kilohertz, which is similar to the beeping noise that a reversing garbage truck makes. This garbage truck is intended to be loud and annoying in order to catch your attention on the roads. Pickleball is an increasingly popular sport. While leading to healthier individuals, it can also harm the health and well-being of neighbors if poorly cited. Pickleball court citing is increasingly causing conflict and controversy in communities. Citing a pickleball court in this location is the functional equivalent of planning to create noise problems and community conflicts. Once you create a noise problem, it is incredibly expensive to fix it. The most effective and least costly regulatory tool is, involves distant setbacks and residential land uses. This is the issue. The City of Lee Summit does not have any policy or laws established around the citing of pickleball courts. Decimal readings and limits are being used, which clearly don't work for pickleball when one looks at the number of pickleball court citing issues across our great country. It is imperative that new methods are developed. If you must approve it, I ask that you put a limit on its use per the UDO allowance. The applicant and the Planning Commission meeting testified that the outdoor pickleball courts were kind of extra, kind of just showed up as part of the development. He stated it would be a good ancillary use to the overall facility. Something extra than that just showed up is not ancillary. I am confident this development is viable without a pickleball court. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Oben, 600 Northwest Cliffside Court. I was going to send this letter, and I thought, no, I'll just come here and kind of go over it. I was informed about the whole Ignite Plan after the church was built. And the reason I was kind of unaware of it is because it's 20-plus years old, and nothing has happened. The prime piece of real estate at Third Street and View High, nothing. It's just sitting there. They finally tore the house down, Bonden's house down. So nothing's happened in 20 years. Why do we start here, and why do we start now? We don't own City Lee Summit. There's a reason they can't take the trees down, because they don't own them. They're Kansas City, Missouri. There's a sidewalk exists that's Kansas City, Missouri, the mixed-use corridor of, for the bike lane. That exists, and you can't walk on it right now, because Kansas City, Missouri does nothing with it, it's so muddy, you can't walk on it. So if you're going to put bikes and stuff, somebody's going to have to clean it up. And apparently, it's not Lee Summit, it's KCMO, so I think that's a big problem. Edgewood's been involved since zoning, since the Summit Church was proposed. I don't know what Old Man Faulkner would have thought, but I think he sold it to the church. And he did that for a reason, because he loved the land and he loved the people around it. So putting a soccer complex in the middle of a residential agricultural area is borderline corrupt. There's no need for this project. There's an indoor soccer complex at View High and Fort, or Banister and 435 at Folded. Maybe it's not the right neighborhood, but it shouldn't be in my neighborhood. The traffic of several hundred cars, have you ever been trying to get off of 470 and turn south on View High, which I have to do every time, when Paragon Star is letting out? Have you ever been there? That will back up all the way to 470, the exit. Just because the Paragon Star traffic is so bad, you literally have to turn north, go to the turnaround, and come south to get home. So I know that part of the reason they're redoing the bike lanes is because MoDOT won't improve a two-lane intersection at 470 and View High. So they've got to get rid of the bike lanes to make it a four-lane intersection to get the federal funding to fix that intersection. The traffic studies, I think, are a bit interesting, because we had, the chief of police, I think, used to live in our neighborhood.
You can address the council.
Okay, well, the police, the-
And just, just be careful, because you're really on the border, because a lot of the things that you're stating, that's fine, it's, it's, this is the public comment area. So let's just address the council, please.
Okay, I was, there's a police chief here, I don't know if he lived in our neighborhood or not.
You're not addressing the police chief.
I'm not. When, I think, when the stop sign, I was going to address the traffic. Traffic came in and changed a lot of stop signs in our neighborhood. If you come in the old entrance to View High, there was a stop sign where you didn't have to stop coming up the hill. And there was really good reason for that. If you have to stop on that hill, you can't make it up the hill. So they rerouted the stop sign, now we have to stop midway up the hill, and we can't get up the hill. So a lot of people didn't like Ashurst going through, I didn't mind it, because it makes that traffic jam at the bottom of the hill not an issue. Obviously, with our, my counterpart was concerned about the noise. Where my house is, it's about 4,000 feet, not 500 feet, from 470. We have a water feature in the backyard, so we don't have to listen to 470. I can't imagine a pickleball court less than 1,000 feet away. There's a time for things to go in people's backyards, and a soccer complex in our backyard is not now or should ever be. And I don't think when Old Man Faulkner sold the land, that was his intent. When we were sold the church, we were sold an early education center. We were not sold a soccer complex, we were not sold traffic, we were not sold hundreds of cars, we were not sold pickleball. That's all I have.
Thank you. There was another person, yes?
So thank you for the opportunity, my name's C.L. Beach, 520 Northwest Edgewood Trail. And my question is more in relationship to something that Matt and I have discussed a couple times, both at church meeting and here last time, about the stormwater. The southeast, or I guess would be the northwest edge of this planned development basically meets kind of what, or the southeast edge of this development meets the northwest edge of my property. I have five and a half acres behind this. And there's a creek that runs through where the, the new drainage pool will be, I guess, basically, through the back of my property, about the middle of my property. And I just wanted to make sure that this drainage or flow studies, if they've been done, I'd like to see these, like have them copied from my records, that aren't going to disrupt my backyard now. Because right now, the way the property slopes off, I guess we're going to have to redo some of the topography to put in, flatten it out for the soccer field, and then put in the retention pond, of course, with the trees and the eastern side of our property, our neighborhood. But again, that drain, that drains back through the back of my property, a small creek that goes all the way back across my property. And, you know, Matt has assured me a couple times that there wouldn't be any issues, but I didn't know if there was any flow studies that had been done on the change in topography and the flow that would be current versus future with the retention pond and the regrading, whatever has to be done for the soccer field. And I also, just for the record, concur with my, my neighbors around the issue about the sound and things that could be coming from the outdoor pickleball courts and the lighting at night from the soccer fields, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Before we go to, back to council?
Kevin Roberts, 612 Northwest Cliffside Court. And I will be brief, I just want to point out one thing from the neighborhood meeting. During peak times, we were, it was indicated by the development group that there would be 600 vehicles on site. They've allowed for 501 parking spaces, so there'll be an overflow of 99 parking spaces. The path of least resistance would say those people are going to park in the neighborhood, on the streets, wherever they can find a place. That's very concerning. Obviously, the noise is a big concern, but parking, you know, in general, is a massive concern for us. We saw a lot of, a lot of activity during the Chipman Road expansion, where we were able, at the very beginning, to go through the church parking lot, and then that was barricaded. So we couldn't go through there. So I have concern that the church will not allow them to use their parking lot, where they're not utilizing as well. So that's, that's one of my major concerns, the noise level is the other, and then light pollution. Paragon Star is over a mile away, and I'll just briefly hold up a photo from my backyard at 10:00 p.m., bright as can be. So I do worry about the light pollution as well, as this progresses with 70-foot-tall lights. If they're not on timers, they're not turned off, that will produce a lot of light that will flow into our neighborhood. That's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else? Okay, Mr. Slush, can you talk, start with the stormwater, and then let's go back to the parking again, so.
Yeah, so on the stormwater side of it, we've had conversations, and the drainage path that he's referring to is coming out of the basin, out of the basin into this existing creek channel that runs its way down to Cedar Creek. And so, you know, we have evaluated and looked at it and informed him that we don't plan to change any portion of the existing creek channel, you know, some from essentially our outfall towards his property. And then additionally, the detention basin will meet all city code and APWA design standards for the stormwater management. So it'd actually be a controlled stormwater runoff versus when you get an open field, as it currently sits with the acreage that drains down there uncontrolled. So in our opinion, stormwater will be controlled, no changes to him, and we won't see any effect on this.
We've been down this path with you before, you know, over the years. It's not your first time in front of us when it comes to stormwater discussion, so. As the site sits right now, you have a lot of water, and because it's fairly flat, has some slope, you're getting a lot of drainage down to that corner. And you're saying you're not going to add to it. Would you say that you're definitely going to, would, would you say that you're, you're not going to add to it, but are you going to decrease the amount that goes in there?
So the difference of what-
By controlling the, the, the speed of the, of the water is what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, so in stormwater, the biggest thing that we worry about is that peak. So when it creates a gigantic peak, the storm basin controls that rush of water that happens. So currently, it's uncontrolled and runs down through there. Now, it will go into the detention basin. Same amount or more water will go through the creek eventually as time goes on, because you have hard surface. However, that rush of flow-
You're going to slow it down.
Will be slowed down to a meat code.
You mentioned a study of some type, do you have any studies, or?
We do, so there's a study available on the portal, and then same, I've given it on my card that they can give us a conversation with.
It's called a, it's, in our packet, it's called a memorandum.
Stormwater memorandum in there.
Yeah, is that, is that what you're referring to?
Yep.
I pulled it open here, hold on a second. Hold on one second, one second. So, so you've got a couple pages here where you've done the, the study, but it's, it's a study done by you, right, Mr. Slush?
Correct.
Okay.
So there'll be a table in there near the end, second page probably, where it talks about existing, proposed, and detained flows.
Okay, okay, well, I get it, I understand it. We can talk about it in a few minutes after we close the public hearing. What about the parking? That last statement, I didn't, I didn't really track that, because at the shared parking there, how many spaces do we have? What was the reference to 601 people, whatever?
I'd have to pull up the traffic study and identify it. I'm assuming that there's some type of a peak calculation at one of the intersections, that maybe it's at Chipman or down at View High and Ashurst. But what we did on the parking calculation is we identified that you had two full soccer fields. We assigned a value of 60 people per soccer field. You then have 12 sports courts inside, and we assigned a value of 12 people, 24 people per basketball, volleyball field. And then we have the 30,000 square feet of office, so we assigned the appropriate 4,000, 4 per thousand, which created a need at full capacity of about 500 parking spaces. And that's how we created the shared uses. My guess is that in the traffic study, the conversation is more of a peak run, or a peak trip calculation at one of those intersections that's with our site, with the church, with the other uses around the driving through an intersection, would be my guess. But we have appropriately sized our parking associated that everything is at full capacity, and we have enough parking for it.
That's what I need, that's what I need to know. I mean, I, we don't want people barking outside of- Okay.
And I think the only other thing, again, is the conversation that we had about the pickleball, but I don't know that I have a whole lot more to add. I mean, it's a calculation that, like I said, we've done a lot of research and looking and believe that with the distances that we're away, it won't create a noise impact to them that is-
Light, light pollution was brought up, but you don't have any lights on these.
Again, there's a light on the soccer field, but again, it's going to be created that will meet your guys' code that has a very strict allowance of the height of the pole, foot candles can be at the property line, and all those will be adhered to, so there won't be any light pollution leaving our site from, from any of that facility.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I have a few things, and I want to try to go in some kind of order. But I might jump around on you, so I'm sorry if I do. Okay, so we talked about the flow studies, and they are attached to today's agenda for this item, and it's a memorandum, not called a study, correct? Okay, so then we can find that online and print it?
And he's more than willing to, he can call me, and I'll give it to him as well.
Okay, okay, and then let's talk about the, the, your pretty blue area here. I heard you say detention, but I just want to be sure, is this retention or detention?
Detention, it will dry.
And can you tell me the difference between the two?
Detention will dry within 40 hours, retention will retain water.
So detention dries within 48 hours, or 40 hours?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight hours, so detention is made to catch a full downpour and hold it for two days. And so it releases it, is there a rate per hour that it's supposed to release it at? What is that calculation?
Yeah, your code has an allowance that in a two-year storm event, you can do one-half CFS per acre of your site. In the 10-year, that is at two, and then at the 100-year, you can go to three CFS per acre. So it's a calculated amount based on the acreage draining to that point.
Okay, and so what's the amount for this, do you know?
Generally, you have 15, you have 15 acres, so you're generally going to be seven CFS, you're going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, whatever, 30 CFS, and then somewhere in the neighborhood of 45.
Okay, and so that should control the water better than it's controlled now?
It'll control the peak, so the detention basin, so yes, it'll create a better situation for, right now, that entire area in any kind of a site, when you have an open area. This entire area, especially some of this area, because now there's pipes coming off of Ashurst that just drain into that channel, are uncontrolled. So in heavy downpour, heavy rain event, that water just pools up, gets together, and runs down the channel. In our event, when it gets there, it'll go through the basin, through a controlled structure, and it'll meter out the water versus allowing it to discharge at a full capacity or full rate.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. Do you have topography of this site? Because as I'm looking at it, I really, like, when I drive by it, I feel like it eventually drops off somewhere, but I can't remember.
There you can start to see the proposed with the existing. And so this at View High is the high side, the church we built up on the high ridge, and then all of this area drained down into a draw, that a ditch that walk, works its way right down through there. And so everything, you know, so this is a basin that we built with the church that drains- drains north. There's another basin on the north side of the church. But essentially, all of this area, about 20 acres, drains down through that draw, down to the south, continues southeasterly all the way down by the Cedar Creek and the Horse Ranch that's down there on Chip.
Okay, and so, what, how many feet from the road to your drainage basin? What's the drop? Do you know? Yeah, thank you. I couldn't see.
So, 901 is our discharge point. And we're up here in the 952, 953 range, so you got 50 feet from west to east.
But yeah, so it's not a huge drop, kind of a slope?
Yes, I mean, you got, I think it's 1,300 feet from west to east, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then, now I want to talk about the parking. And not so much the number of parking, but I remember when we had our dual meeting with the planning commission, we were all down there on the floor, and we were talking about how sites are set up and how, where you place the parking really says a lot to the area. And I said that I would prefer to see in the future parking go behind the buildings and not road, parking, building. I just feel like that looks better. It gives a better look for the area. So, why did you guys choose, you almost wrapped it with parking, but why did you choose to do that instead of put the building or maybe the soccer field or something closer to View High and then put the parking in the back?
So, we had a lot of iterations as you run through the site. And so, our thought is you have a residential user to the south, acreage user that's been there for years, had conversations with them, and they have no intent to leave, develop, or do anything else. You have a residential component then to the east side. You have a user to the north that is occupied daily but not heavily, heavily on Sunday. So, then our idea became, let's try to create an opportunity where the front door is here, pushing it away from any residential user here. We would have some parking up on the front side of it because we didn't want the building to be directly out their doors. They looked out thinking that that would be more impactful to them. So, the idea was is that we'd push it back and leave some parking up in here thinking that this could be utilized for our daily office users. So, the idea of the site would be is that Monday through Friday, you may have your rehab users, you may have your office users, you may have some of those people that are coming in and out on a less sports-type deal. Then, we wrapped some of the front parking, putting the handicap stalls up front, and some of it down into here just to get to the soccer field. But then, the idea being is putting another large parking area over across the area with walkable paths that could get across to either field area, but allow an opportunity just like you do at like any of the sports stadiums, Chiefs or Royals. They make you walk a smidge before you have to get to your car to buy some time to start letting the traffic go out before. And so, the idea of as opposed to creating just a massive field of parking someplace is that by creating spots and opportunities, it would give more appropriate parking for the uses when they need it, and then some of the transition of game times, you know, at the top hour, bottom of hour timeframes, you could park people here, and that walkover would allow some of the time to allow some of that transition to get out so that it doesn't then impact the intersections and the street network, that everybody gets out at the exact same time and register their car directly crossed.
Well, that was another question I was going to ask, is how do people get across the street without getting run over when everybody's trying to go everywhere?
Yep, so we put a walkable path here, and we put a crosswalk up here. And then, again, that's why you're starting to see the idea that at some point, that commercial use up there, we believe, we don't know what that wants to be, but think there is a good user for that that could be ancillary to this, that could be a good, you know, component that we'll bring forward when we figure out what that wants to be. But again, then that provides another opportunity of parking if that's, you know, the coffee shop, the cleaner, the shake, you know, who knows what it is, someplace for somebody to go to while they're sitting there, waiting for their kid to finish their sport or training. So, we have had a lot of different, you know, operations of flipping this thing around. We've had soccer fields up here. We've had them back here. We've kind of maneuvered around. Felt like this created the least impactful use for the site versus the neighbors being out there. And so, you know.
Well, I understand. I don't know that I would want to look out my door and see a parking lot or a soccer field, but I'm thinking I don't want to see a parking lot. But I don't like parking lots, so there's that.
Yeah. And we've had conversations, again, you know, with the residents to the south. I think that, you know, as we did the View High development down there at Third and View High, the idea is that corridor likely does start to develop. And I know there's some acreage unis out there now that don't have that intent, but I think that at some point, that corridor continues to develop, and that becomes kind of the westerly side. And so, you know, this is the future 109th Street signal, you know, right in that intersection. That's the future beginning of the road that continues to the south. It's on the thoroughfare master plan. This is kind of the beginning of that process.
Okay. I'm still not convinced that a parking lot looks good there, but that's fine.
Well, we'll have plenty of landscaping and existing trees on the side to hopefully buffer that field.
Well, I can, I think, I think I can say that I'm done. I think. If not, I'll be back. But thank you.
Thank you. We can always come back to Councilmember Carlisle, but at this point, I'm going to keep going on the agenda. So, are there any additional questions from council? Does applicant care to make any further comment, Mr. Slisch?
We're good. Thank you.
There is no further testimony. I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Prior.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is kind of just a question in general, but, so we're voting on the rezoning. Why do we always vote for the rezoning before we vote for the actual? Because then, if the actual thing doesn't pass, then we're stuck with the rezoning. Why do we do it in that order?
We have a second reading. So, if you're talking about the incentives, yeah, if you're talking about the incentives, is that what you're talking about? We have the incentive conversation, and if incentives aren't gotten or aren't to the developer's satisfaction, they can just choose whether or not they want to move forward with the development in a second reading.
Okay.
So, we still have to get that second reading done, and it depends on how the next conversation goes as to whether they would want to go forward.
So, if this, so if the rezoning passed unanimously, there would-
It wouldn't.
That's it, then the zoning's changed, right?
No, not till the second reading.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that make sense? Mr. Dunn, why don't you explain it differently, please?
No, you're entirely correct, Mayor. In order for ordinance to be adopted and approved, it takes two readings, so this would just be the first reading. And then, quite honestly, it takes the mayor signing the ordinance to actually truly make it adopted and effective.
Okay, so in this case, if the soccer thing, if this doesn't pass, then it stays ag?
If first reading does not pass-
If the-
The first reading does not accomplish anything. It's just the first reading of the ordinance. It takes two readings and adoption for it to become effective.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Prior, is that it? Okay, thanks. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I appreciate the members of the public who came, asked some good questions tonight, and I appreciate the applicant and staff kind of addressing some of those, especially in respect to the parking and drainage. I don't have any issue with the rezoning and the kind of proposed plan. The incentives are a separate discussion. I guess a technical question with CP2, does that also require the development plans? Like, if, as we're voting on the preliminary development plan too, correct? So, if this were to be finally passed and adopted with, after second reading, they could only do what is shown in this preliminary development plan, and if they decided that that wasn't doable without incentives, they would just not be able to move forward without a new development plan being passed, or how does that work?
Correct. It would, so the preliminary development plan aspect could sit on the shelf for a period of two years. If they didn't file a final development plan, then that just expires.
But they can't just sub in a totally different use with the CP2 zoning without-
That's correct. They'd need to bring a new plan forward.
Okay, so, yeah. So, even if we change the zoning, if they decide that for whatever reason financially they can't build this, they're going to have to come back and ask for something else to be approved. Okay, thank you.
It'd take another PDP.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, just as follow-up to my questions, I just wanted to comment that I completely understand the residents' concerns about light pollution and the pickleball courts because I know how loud those can be, and you can put a lot of things in between you and them, and they are still obnoxious. So, I love the fact that people love to play pickleball. I love that everybody wants to get out there and be healthy. Let's hope you all keep your knees, but it's obnoxious sounding. So, I completely get their worry on that. Other than those issues, I believe that the stormwater is probably going to be better than worse here. Usually, that's how it works. When you collect it, it does get better. So, even if it's not a pretty little pool with a fountain or something like that in it, and it's just an ugly, dry basin, it's fine. But, that being said, really, my only issue with this is the location of the parking. I really wish that we would have put either the building closer to or the soccer court and the pickleball courts on the other side and let the parking lay behind. I think that would have helped a lot with the residential concerns, although parking lots have light and all of that. It's still not the pickleball courts, and it's not a soccer game. So, I completely get that. I just wish that we could really start getting the parking behind the buildings and not wrapping around buildings and sitting in front of buildings. So, those are my only comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. Kind of along the same lines of the comments that have already been made. I appreciate the residents. Those who were here earlier, I think they've left. But I appreciate their comments and their concerns, and always take them into account and respect those comments always. But at the end of the day, I would support a project like this for many reasons. I think it fits well with, like you said, the activity area that we've created with a very well-thought-out strategic plan that was less than 20 years ago. And it falls in line with what's north of here at Paragon Star. I think this community, our community, those of us that were involved, I guess it's been a while for me, that were involved in youth athletics, either coaching or running around with your kids all over the metro area, mainly on the Kansas side for us Lee Summit residents. If we can have these kind of amenities and these kind of projects and resources and services for our community, I gladly welcome the, logistically where this sits, along with the other complementary project, North of Here, Paragon Star, and everything that's going on there, and have people come here to Lee Summit to spend tax dollars, and have our residents have opportunities not to have to drive 20, 30 miles, 40 miles to take our kids to go play in facilities like these. As far as this facility itself, I see the concerns about the pickleball courts, potentially the light pollution with the soccer, the exterior or the outside soccer field. But I think the most intense use of this project is indoors. And to me, that's really where the main focus is on the inside, what happens inside the structure. So, I guess, again, I'll just reiterate, I think this would be a great, great addition to our community, and I would be in support of it. So, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you. I too would like to piggyback on Councilmember Lopez now. I'm speaking from somebody who, my kids play every sports, all the sports. So, even this last weekend, we were in Kansas the entire weekend for indoor/outdoor, whether it's soccer, basketball, all the things. So, something like this, I know one of the public comments at the neighborhood meeting I read was saying that there's not a need for this. I'm not sure where that view came from because we don't have something like this necessarily at Lee Summit. And I've always, I've been saying this for a while, that there is a need for this. There's, I feel like soccer, leaving out even basketball, work, I mean, it's a growing sport. It hasn't always been as popular, I feel like, here in Lee Summit, but everybody has somebody in their family playing it. So, I feel like it's something that we need to kind of get with the times here, and so that way, we're retaining our own community and our community spending money here. So, I feel like this is filling a big gap that has been needed for a while because not only saving miles on my car, but gas money. We eat out in Kansas. I, I'm almost embarrassed to say how much money I do spend in Kansas, but that's the life we live, and I would love nothing more than to invest that money in my own community. And this is a huge way to do that, and I know not just myself, but tons of people we know that this would benefit in the long run. So, I am very excited about this project. It's something I was hoping we would do on the Lee Summit side with Parks and Rec, but I think it's a good, it'd be a good partner with what they're doing and with what Paragon has going on. I think it's a good segue into both and partnering there with them if that's something that you guys are able to do. So, I, yes, I'm very excited. I feel for the residents, speaking about the things that, you know, aren't as exciting on their end. I get it. And of course, there's a lot of things probably in Lee Summit that could go in better places, but in the end, it doesn't negate the need for it. So, thank you for bringing this project here and filling a need that has been very much needed here. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would echo, and I'm not going to repeat what Mayor Protem and Councilmember Hodges said, but I feel the same way. I'm excited about the project. I love the fact that there's going to be a little entertainment area for kids, place, we need that so bad. They have Urban Air out in Kansas, and I was out there a couple of weeks ago, and I was just blown away by the fact, if anybody's been out there, it's very cool. It's a place for kids. They have party rooms and that type of thing, and we don't really have much of anything like that here. So, I think that'll be a big deal. But then, I did want to say, understanding the concerns from the residents, we want to make sure that you guys know that we hear what you're saying. I do want to say about the detention area. A few years back, when I was required to put in a detention area in my office down here, down Lee, down here in downtown Lee Summit, this detention was actually designed by Mr. Slits, and it works. So, I have driveway impervious area all around my building, and you can't even, when there's heavy rains, you can't even hardly see the water coming out of there. So, I just want to assure you that those detention areas do work. They do take the water where it needs to go, slows down the flow, and hopefully that'll make you feel confident about they do work. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll just add, yes, Councilmember Level.
Sorry. So, I was just thinking of, and this is just going to date me a little bit, but I remember when Hartman Park was being proposed in Lee Summit and butts right up against Winterset Valley. And I know there was great concern about the noise with softball and bats and the lights and the light pollution. And, you know, fortunately, the project went through, and now we have, you know, really great park and it's turned into a great access to Rock Bridge Island. I know same, similar scenarios with neighbors in Legacy Park, and kind of what gets borne out of this is that it really doesn't create the nuisance that may be perceived. And so, you know, judging with staff and what the developers put here together, that, I know that's the fear of the neighbors and the noise pollution and the light pollution and things like that, but what we've seen borne out in these projects is really an asset to the community of the city and not necessarily the nuisance that may be perceived before it goes in. And so, again, empathetic to their feelings there. I'm just relying on past projects with similar, probably more noise pollution, more light pollution that has born, been borne out to be a real attractive project for the city and the neighbors and worked really well. So, anyway, that's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Hartman Park is a gem, and I can see why it could have been scary to approve that in that location. But in this situation, a few things I do like about this is it will bring some traffic to a spot in our community that needs traffic, like to help with any kind of commercial. And this would be, this would be a driver. Yes, I feel pretty confident about the- Yes, I, I, I'm, I feel pretty confident about the, the detention, the parking. I, I thought, I think you did a good job with the shared parking, the, the agreement that you came up with, that, that helps reduce a lot of parking, and that, so that, to me, is a big bonus. And you tried to wrap it, so I can't really complain about that. And then, I just think that the pickleball need, we need to go ahead and do an ordinance, or, you know, have, have that. It'd be easier for us to make a decision, Mr. Dunning, or to our development department, if we just had something to go off of, 'cause I think this is plenty of distance. I think if we were at 400 or 500 feet, this is at 570 feet, and that's literally almost two football fields. So, I mean, it's, it's a long ways away, and I do know it's annoying if you're up close to a, a pickleball court, but I think this is, I think this has got enough distance that it's gonna be mitigated for. So, yes, I, I'll be in support of this as well. And with that, I'm going to ask, who is, who gets the pleasure? Councilmember Rader, would you please read? Oh, let me get together here. Would you please read?
Bill number 25.
Bill number 25 dash 052.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading, bill number 25 dash 052. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District Ag Agricultural to District CP2 Planned Community Commercial and Preliminary Development Plan for View High Sports Complex on approximately 17.18 acres of land located at 3350 Northwest Ashurst Drive, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance of the Codes of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 052 by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Mayor Protem Lopez. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Councilmember Level?
Aye.
Thank you. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass unanimously, but as Councilmember Pryor mentioned earlier, we still have a conceptual incentive presentation to go through, go through, so it doesn't mean we just rezoned it. It depends on if it goes to second reading and, and we vote on it again. So, for adoption. That does take us to public comments. Ms. Lombardo, do we have any public comments?
Not have any public comments tonight.
Thank you. Then we will dive right into this presentation with regard to the conceptual economic development. Incentive request, View High Indoor Sports Complex at 3381 Northwest Shipman Road, 3D Builders KC LLC is the applicant. We, it's not a public hearing, but I'll try to treat it somewhat like a public hearing, other than council members can give their opinions more, because it's not a public hearing. We're, we're trying to give you some feedback, if this is, you know, the right direction, the right incentive request. You obviously heard people say that they would, they believe there's a need. There is a need. We've, haven't had indoor soccer fields in Lee Summit forever, and we have to drive all, all parts of the metro. So, I'll look, I'll leave it to you to tell us more about this. You're Ms. Orr, right?
Got it, yes. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for hearing this conceptual incentive presentation this evening on behalf of 3D Builders for the View High Sports Entertainment Project. My name is Rachel Orr. I am a partner with the Lethrip Law Firm in Kansas City, and I will be co-presenting this conceptual presentation this evening on behalf of 3D Builders, along with Christine Bushyhead, who most of you likely know very well. You just heard Matt talk about a fair amount of detail on this project, and we'll try not to repeat ourselves, except to the extent we think there are items that are worth repeating, especially given the late hour. We wanna be respectful of your time and your sanity. There are a few preliminary items that I wanted to address before we dive into the first slide here, mostly to lay the groundwork for this conceptual presentation and the incentive request in a ma, in a manner that would be hopeful, hopefully helpful to council. This project involves the development of a cutting-edge, state-of-the-art, first-in-class, 270,000-square-foot indoor/outdoor multi-sport and entertainment complex. The development of this project would expand the City of Lee Summit into an entirely new industry, the indoor youth sports industry. The youth sports industry is one of the largest and fastest-growing industries in the United States today. The development of this project in the city will improve the health outlook and the quality of life for thousands of Lee Summit residents and their children, as Councilmember Hodges, Mayor Protem Lopez have already noted for us. And it will bring hundreds of thousands of visitors to the City of Lee Summit. The development of this project in the city will have significant economic impact on the city on a citywide basis, not only from those visitors who are traveling to the city, but also from the families in Lee Summit who can stay here now instead of spending their nights and weekends in Kansas for their kids' practices, games, and tournaments, spending their money buying gas, going out to eat and shopping. This project will bring targeted development into an area that the city has targeted for development in the View High Corridor, as we've already discussed, and there will be significant infrastructure improvements that we'll describe over the course of this incentive request that will stimulate additional development in that View High Corridor in the future. For these reasons, this is not going to be a customary incentive request, because this is not a customary project. This project is unique. It is different. It is special, and there may never be another one that is gonna be presented before council like this again. So, for this incentive request, there are gonna be also elements of this project that council has not had to take under consideration before. My job tonight is to give you the tools, resources, and information that you need to make an informed decision about your expansion into this new industry. So, why am I telling you all this at the outset? If I were sitting in your shoes, and a developer's attorney just told me that they were making a different incentive request than I'd made or had considered before, I would wanna make sure that I was not establishing some precedent for future developers to come in and say, "I want that incentive too. You gave it to 3D." Hopefully, we can give you sufficient comfort this evening that you will not be establishing that precedent, that this project is distinguishable, it is unique, and you will not be establishing that precedent as a result of considering this incentive request. So, now I've made a lot of very big claims, and so now I've got to prove it to you. This slide shows an overview and a roadmap of where we are going to go this evening, and the order in which we will address the topics on this pa, page. The first thing that we wanna cover is an introduction to the development team. 3D Builders KC is based here in Lee Summit. Its principals are Justin Beebe and Scott Wheatley, who are sitting behind me here tonight. They are both longtime Lee Summit residents. On this slide, you can see their representative experience in real estate investment, development, property management, as well as construction. And I think the most important fact about Justin and Scott is that they have children who compete in youth sports. Justin has three daughters who compete in basketball, volleyball, soccer, and swim, and Scott has two daughters that participate in the same sports, plus softball, flag football, karate. Yep, I think that's the list. So, as you can see, they have a personal vested interest in making sure that this project is successful. On this slide, you can also see some of the project partners that they have brought in in order to ensure that this is a high-quality project that the city and its constituents can be proud of, including Finkel and Williams Architecture, Meyer Brothers Building Company, Engineering Solutions, and the Sports Facilities Advisory. We thought it was especially important to highlight for council the relationship with the Sports Facility Advisory. 3D knew that in order for this project to be a nationally competitive facility, it would need to partner with a national expert on the development of these projects, and so they have partnered with the Sports Facilities Advisory, or SFA, as I will refer to them. Just so you know, in case there are questions from a consultancy perspective or regarding any of the economic impact projections that we're going to discuss tonight, we do have a representative of SFA participating by video conference, and they are on the East Coast, so good, good for them. So, the SFA is the leading sports recreation and fitness development planning firm in the United States. This map shows a pin where they have developed, they have served as developer, manager, or a consultant on projects in the United States for similar sporting complexes. We've highlighted some of their relevant experience on this page, working in Kansas and Missouri. It is not inclusive. And for those of you who have been to Blue Hawk Sports Park and Overland Park, they currently manage that facility. We've already talked about the proposed project site. It's about 15 acres of vacant land immediately to the south of the Summit Church. I also mentioned that this is gonna bring infrastructure to the, this area. This is an infrastructure-challenged site for all the reasons that we talked about during the rezoning request, and we'll get into some of the details, as well as the corresponding costs for those infrastructure improvements later on. I'm not gonna read all of these features to you, but I do wanna point out some of the features of this complex that I think make this project truly special. First, there is going to be an indoor FIFA regulation-sized soccer field. That would make this complex the only complex in the metro to have this feature. The next closest facility is located in Des Moines, Iowa. So, it's, it's a big deal, and in a minute, we'll show you just how big it is from a scale perspective. There'll also be 5,000 square foot of office space that will, we expect to be occupied by a physical rehabilitation group, as well as 7,500 square feet of speed, agility, and training, strength-training areas for the general public, but also for the club teams that call this facility home. And the 10,000-square-foot Family Entertainment Center, which we've already heard some excitement about, will include indoor playground, golf simulators, as well as some other features. There will also be a second FIFA regulation-sized field outside, as well as the five pickleball courts, and we've already discussed the two-acre retail pad that could be possibly developed in the future for retail or restaurant purposes. So, the total investment in the City of Lee Summit is $49.25 million. We're gonna go through these next few slides fairly quickly, but we wanted to give you a feel for the layout of the facility, as well as to show you some of the most recent architect renderings. I think Matt's were a little outdated, and we've got some other ones that make the project look really, it, it looks really great. So, this is the entry-level floor plan. You enter in through the lobby doors. There is the arcade portion of the Family Entertainment Center, the office space where the physical rehab group would occupy it. And the thing that I wanted to point out on this slide is the gray strip that runs right through the middle is a mezzanine area where you can, it's open to the courts and the fields below, where spectators can view from the upper-level area. So, it provides additional seating and also just kind of a, a cool view for, for families to watch. On the lower level, there's the remaining, the remaining large portion of the Family Entertainment Center, as well as that speed, agility, and strength-training area. This is where the main play and sporting activity areas are as well, the basketball courts and that FIFA field. And the, as I talked about earlier, the size of the FIFA field is tremendous. It's larger than eight basketball courts, so that just kind of puts it in, in scale and in perspective. Here's the exterior concept. I know Matt already showed you this, so we'll go through. Here's the rendering of the lobby entrance. When you walk through the lobby doors, there's the arcade entrance, the front desk, and back in that corner is the cafe area. You can see the staircase that goes down to the fields and down to the courts. Here's another view from the other side of the lobby that shows that staircase a little bit better, as where, well as the cafe and the mezzanine area for spectators. When you go down the staircase, there's the basketball courts, and then here's another view from the courts. In the background, you can see the Family Entertainment Center indoor playground rendered. And then, this is the indoor FIFA soccer field. I played soccer in high school, and to me, this is just pretty spectacular. One thing to point out here, there's two levels for viewing, so there's the field level, and then there's also the mezzanine level above. And this is the other exterior portion on the other side of the building that shows the exterior FIFA field, as well as those five pickleball courts. So, we have talked about where this project is gonna be located, who's gonna develop it, and what 3D is proposing to bring to the City of Lee Summit, and now we wanna talk about what this project is going to do for the City of Lee Summit. And these, in our view, are the main value drivers for this project. The expansion of the youth sports facilities in Lee Summit that will be brought about by this project will allow the city to more meaningfully participate in that youth sports industry, which is a $20 billion a year industry in the United States, and is projected to continue to grow for the foreseeable future, has the, the, the possibility of transforming Lee Summit into a youth sports destination for the region. The expansion of facilities will also allow the city to be able to host and co-host regional and national tournaments that currently is unable to because of the lack of adequate facilities. And Justin and Scott have engaged in conversations with club teams that currently practice and play outside of the cities of Lee Summit, and have received indications of interest from those teams to call this facility their home. Those are basketball, volleyball, and soccer clubs, and there are approximately 2,000 athletes involved in those clubs. We'll go into this next bullet point in more detail on the next slide, but there will be significant increase in economic, economic activity in the city for the reasons that we've all kind of discussed already, but we'll go into those projections on the next slide. There will be unquantifiable health benefits and social impacts for the city and its families and residents. Being able to offer the opportunity to compete and to socialize around sporting events on a year-round basis, regardless of seasonality, is a pretty important service and a wonderful service to be able to offer to your constituents. We already mentioned this is in a targeted area for development, and that we're bringing infrastructure that we'll talk about again later, that will stimulate future development. And the city has also targeted job growth. This project goes a long way towards that growth goal. In addition to the 200 temporary construction jobs, there are projected to be 168 permanent new jobs, 28 of which will exceed the county average wage by 107 to 359 percent. The reason for that significant range is because there's, you know, doctors' salaries and owners of the physical rehab group salaries are included in that range. On the economic impact proposition, there's a lot of numbers and columns and rows on this table. You don't need to worry about those. I'll kind of tell you what, what's important in a takeaway here. But, there is projected to be an increase in citywide tax revenues from visitors and overnight guests. The Sports Facilities Advisory, the SFA company, on, as the consultant for the project, has prepared various projections that are for the use of the project, one of those being the economic impact this project would have specifically on the City of Lee Summit if it were to be developed in the City of Lee Summit. And they don't just make these numbers up or pull them from thin air. These are based off of projects that they actually manage and that they have actually developed, and they extrapolate them into our geographic area and come up with reasonable projections. Like I said, they're the experts, and they are available to the extent council has questions of those, of these projections at the end. They are projecting that from this tourist economic impact, there'll be $270.8 million of additional spending over a 20-year period. The next bullet point says 90-plus minutes. I wanna explain what that means. So, SFA's projections only include spending from people who have to travel 90 minutes or more to Lee Summit for events and tournaments. In other words, it does not include spending by Lee Summit residents who are staying here instead of going and spending their money in Kansas. It does not include spending by pretty much anybody that drives to this facility from the greater Kansas City metropolitan area. So, these numbers are understated in that respect, but I did wanna point it out, because that's what the projections include. Okay, so we've talked about what the benefits are to the city, and these benefits are not based on speculation. And in order to kind of show you firsthand how these are not speculative in nature, we wanted to find an example of another Midwestern, midsize city that had built a, a project similar to this that has experienced tremendous success. And we think a great example of that project is the Recplex in West Des Moines, Iowa. On this slide, you can see the population of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, as well as the population of the metropolitan statistical area. So, it is a smaller city than the City of Lee Summit, and the MSA is quite a bit smaller than the MSA, our MSA, which is about 2.4 million people. The story for the Recplex is that two residents who had kids that played sports approached the city about a public-private partnership, because they recognized that there was a need for facilities that was not being met, that was not being met. And so, they approached the city for, and in October of 2021, it opened its doors. It cost $60 million to construct, and about 55% of it was funded by city-issued revenue bonds. In 2022, the facility hosted 61 events, including basketball, volleyball, soccer, and hockey tournaments, and other events and activities. And in 2023, I was gonna read a quote from the general manager of the Recplex, that he was quoted in a business record article, saying, "We get calls from all the restaurants up by Jordan Creek wanting to know our schedule, because they're swamped when those things are in town. The hotels, it's been a whole new source of people using their facilities because of us. It's been a game changer." And then, due to the success of the Recplex, in 2025, they're expected to break ground on a 100,000-square-foot expansion of the facility because of the demand for the, the facility's features. And on a site immediately adjacent to the Recplex, this year- And on a site immediately adjacent to the Recplex, this year or next year, they're expected to break ground on a $400 million development project that's known as the Grand Experience. It will involve an indoor water park, restaurants, retail, hotel, and convention center. So that's independent, independent development that occurs strictly from the success of this project. Now, this is, looks a little funny, but we're going to try to show you a quick video clip that illustrates some of the features of the project and also talks about the city's perspective on the community benefits. It's real short.
Hockey to soccer to competitive video games, a massive new center in West Des Moines has something for everyone. KCC's Amanda Rucker was at the grand opening at the Recplex and shows us what's in store.
The 300,000-square-foot Mid-American Recplex has something for everyone. With two indoor ice arenas, an indoor full-size turf field, four basketball courts, three pickleball courts, meeting room space, an esports center with virtual reality stations, a physical therapy center, and three outdoor turf fields, the new West Des Moines facility aims to cover all the bases.
There we go.
The ribbon-cutting ceremony kicked off the building's grand opening today with local kids, hockey players breaking the ice, and donors who hope the new sports complex will bring more families to West Des Moines.
I think it's going to continue to allow our community to be something that people seriously want to move here, businesses want to be here because of the quality of life of what we have. And we're really happy that we're given opportunities for kids to exercise and be with their friends and compete.
He says the city wanted to provide its own indoor sports facility with year-round access and support for kids' athletics programs. And the facility's general manager says events at the Recplex will draw visitors from across the region and the country.
Our phones ringing off the hook, and it's a good problem to have. We have 18 basketball tournaments on the books. We've got 10 hockey tournaments, six soccer tournaments. We've got four volleyball tournaments, as well as some major events.
So I really like that story. I think it shows what a Midwestern midsize city can do with a project like this to make it truly something special and something that all of the residents are proud of and are happy, and I can guarantee you that their residents are glad that that is constructed in their vicinity. We're going to pivot slightly and turn to other indoor/outdoor projects in our metropolitan area that have recently opened their doors and that have recently had incentive packages awarded to them so that we can kind of do a little bit of a comparison on the industry standards. The first project we're going to look at is Blue Hawk in Overland Park. This is a 240,000-square-foot indoor multi-sport complex that cost $88.6 million to construct and opened its doors in October of 2024. For those of you who are familiar with Blue Hawk, you know that this was part of a larger, expected to be part of a larger development. The indoor sports park was the first phase. I only mention that because the TDD pay-as-you-go and the CID pay-as-you-go were incentive tools that were utilized for the overall development, but I could not figure out whether or not or to what extent they were used for the indoor park, so I did not include them in this matrix. I know Mr. Bushick summarizes the values of incentives that are requested for council in this format, so we thought it would be helpful to illustrate it for you in this manner. The city of Overland Park used two incentive tools that provided three different incentives to the Blue Hawk facility. First, they issued sales tax and revenue, or STAR bonds. STAR bonds are intended to finance major entertainment projects in the state of Kansas. They provided upfront financing of project costs, and they issued $45 million for that facility. They also issued industrial revenue bonds, or IRBs, which is the equivalent of Chapter 100 in Missouri in that it provides a sales tax exemption on construction materials, as well as real property tax abatement for a period of up to 10 years. In this case, they targeted a 30% abatement level for this project. And you'll see the total value of the incentives is 58, around 58%. One thing I wanted to point out before we go to the next Kansas project is that when we get to our incentive request at the end of this presentation, there will be a present value concept that's built into our matrix table that is not present on these Kansas charts, and I wanted to explain why that is. With the exception of real property tax abatement, all of the Kansas incentives provide upfront financing of project costs, and so there is no present value of money consideration. So we didn't include it in these tables, but it is included in our matrix. The value of the incentives that will be received or will be proposed to be received over time will be discounted to take into account the time value of money. And the second project is Home Field KC, which is in Kansas City, Kansas. This is 150,000-square-foot indoor multi-sport complex that cost $60 million and opened in the spring of 2024. And within the first four months after opening, they hosted a basketball tournament of approximately 2,000 teams, as well as 10 other events. So let's look at the incentives for Home Field. The city, I'm sorry, the Unified Government of Wyandotte County and Kansas City, Kansas, issued $2.5 million of CID bonds to provide upfront financing of those CID eligible costs. They also issued $45 million of STAR bonds, which also provided upfront financing of the project costs. And they issued industrial revenue bonds for the sales tax exemption on construction materials and real property tax abatement. So the total value of the incentives is 88%. The very last slide of this presentation, just for reference before I hand things off to Christine, we'll have a snapshot that will have a table that shows all four of these projects that we're talking about tonight in a single table so that you can see and compare the projects across, the incentive values across the table. So with that, I will turn it over to Christine Bushyhead, who is going to take us through the targeted outcomes that this project furthers under the city's comprehensive plan, as well as walk you through the infrastructure and the incentive requests for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Christine Bushyhead, Bushyhead Law. Wow, so you've heard the description of the project and how it is first to market here in the city of Lee's Summit. And you've also had a little bit of information about the local marketplace economic impact, as well as that tournament travel economic impact. One thing, comment I want to make about marketplace that kind of came up in the previous hearing is that 87th and Bannister location, which is a location a lot of, a lot of folks who have soccer kids may have frequented, that particular location was actually a leased space by those teams, and the owner of that building sold the building to an owner occupier. So it took away that location as a place for soccer near to us, which from our perspective has been an advantage because that's, that continues to be part of that influx of interest that is being expressed to our developer for this particular location because of the discontinuing of that space for soccer. So I just want to make sure that that was clear on that. But in addition to the projects, as we described in all these economic pieces of that, we also have the city's comprehensive plan. And there were several nodes of that comprehensive plan that were indicated in the land use, but there's also some other ones that weren't mentioned, things like community and recreation being a community that celebrates cultural amenities, the support for the healthy and life choices and opportunities, the adaptable framework for continued growth in changing environments. And this is where we ask, what is our marketplace in Lee's Summit saying we need to have? What are our citizens in Lee's Summit saying we need to have as far as the changing environment, the market environment, and what happens in our world? Sports are very important. Recreational sports are important, and having those facilities, and our Parks and Recreation Department, of course, nationally renowned for that. But we also need that competitive sports, sports location as well. And of course, sports keeps kids safe, hopefully out of trouble and healthy throughout their, healthy habits for their lifetime. But what is also really interesting about this location for this is that this is a commercial corridor that is very difficult to develop in because of that city limit line and what needs to happen from infrastructure standpoint, as well as just getting permissions and working with a different jurisdiction. So it's not easy. But if you step back, we have got this amazing commercial corridor that is sports. Fred O'Bannon is golf. Frank White, baseball. Bike trails, Longview Lake, Longview Community Center, the future Parks and Rec Longview plans that they have for the, for that master-planned area. We have MCC Longview Theater. We have the theater there. And of course, Paragon Star Sports Complex for Soccer up on the, on the north end of this corridor. So I was listening to, earlier to that presentation about tourism, and I'm going, hey, I think let's market this, let's get this, let's, let's see what our tourism group could do with this. It's a positive lifestyle. It's intergenerational play locations, a culture community that is active and vibrant, which is what Lee's Summit is. This facility could ignite that corridor and the conversation of that corridor and the marketing of that corridor. Sorry, I missed a, missed one. So it's unique, and we're going to have a unique request. And we've given you, especially with the limited tools that we have in the state of Missouri, to incentivize and make financially feasible these types of projects. We've talked about the Destination Youth Sports Indoor Complex and this literally $20 billion US industry and the citywide economic impact. But these indoor sports complexes, the facilities themselves, are not large sales tax generators. This is one of the reasons that the three comparable projects are utilized upfront financing. Bonds were issued to build those buildings and not to the cost of the developer. So it's a lot easier to make a sports complex work financially if you don't have a mortgage to pay. And the STAR bonds program, and it was alluded to, that STAR bonds program is Kansas' way of saying we have things that we value from a quality and cultural community standpoint because it's in the statute. It's for museums, river walks, sports complexes, tourism destinations. So they are very specific about what they want to use that particular, those particular bonds for. Our incentive request. STAR bonds are high risk because they are based upon getting revenue to pay those bonds. And there is one example on the Kansas side that has struggled and continues to struggle, and that's Prairie Fire. That was a museum-based STAR bond project that has yet today has struggled from the beginning. But for us, the request we have for you is low risk, almost no risk for the city. It's pay-as-you-go CID with a 1% sales tax, and this CID would be over the complex, the 17 acres, and the Summit Church property, a Longview High in the Summit Church, because they would, might entertain development there if they had that opportunity. And then we have an ask for a tax redirection. The city contributes 1.5% of its 2.75% city sales tax generated within that CID area, kind of in a, it's kind of like a TIF, but it's really more like a sales tax reimbursement agreement to allow those dollars to go towards paying for public infrastructure, and you'll see kind of where that's going to be allocated here in a moment. And then we have the sales tax exemption of construction materials, which is one of the asks under the Chapter 100 program, and then a 100% abatement for 25 years on the real property. What is, is supportive of that level of 100% is also the idea that the United Methodist Church of Lee's Summit has owned that property for nine years. So for nine years, there has been no tax revenue from that property. And in the preceding years, it was zoned agriculture. So the tax revenue and the taxing districts that would receive revenue from this particular location haven't had an expectation for almost, for over probably 10 years, and don't have an expectation that there would be a revenue source from that particular property. So what public improvements would we like you to finance and be partners with? They total about $9.76 million, but we know it's important for your all's considerations of past incentives to understand what that division is between traditional public improvements and the CID public eligible costs. So the traditional improvements are listed there. You've heard about them through the planning, the rezoning application, but they, these are the $6.55 million in traditional public improvements are the roads. Is the regional detention, sidewalks, bike paths, traffic, street trees, all of those things. Then the $3.21 million in CID public eligible costs are parking lots and lighting and landscape and other utilities. And we all are coming to find out parking lots are extremely expensive to build. And we used to always say, oh, that parking garage is, is, is the hard nut to crack. Well, parking lots are very expensive to build as well. So those are the project costs that we would like included in any type of reimbursement by the CID and the city's direction, sales tax direction. So to kind of look quickly again at this, but mostly we wanted to use our, the public hearing slide to also overlay that CID district. So the CID district is over the 17 acres that's going to be purchased by the developer, and then the, oh, it's about four to six acres. I'm not, don't, that is to the north there that still, that is will remain church property owned by the church. It's theirs to do with what they want, but it's going to be in the CID in case it is developed commercially and there's potential additional revenue. Our revenue projections do not assume development on those, those vacant, that vacant land. Our revenue projections are about development in the pad site, as well as the complex that we're proposing. So using the format that we're most familiar with, but we have, we have put together what the ask is. The CID, we are asking for 27 years at 1%, and the city tax redirection of 1.5% for 25 years. Those two revenue sources would fund that $9,761,000 public improvements, whether it's the two-thirds of that number being traditional public improvements and one-third of that number being CID eligible public improvements. The net present value of that, because it is going to be paid over time, as pay-as-you-go, it isn't going to be front, front-paid, is really is about $4.5 million. Then the Chapter 100, sales tax exemption and construction materials, that has a present value. So you'll see that the request is $1.6 million, and the present value of that is $1.6 million because that's going to be immediately today money being, being saved with the development. And then finally, the real estate tax abatement of 100% for 25 years. We've used some assumptions to develop a scenario of how much could there be in property taxes over that 25 years? The number's about $35 million. The net present value, again, of that number is important because that isn't upfront money. And that net present value is about $14,787.226. So essentially, we're saying this ask is for $20,915,600, but let's just call it $21 million. That's about 42%, .47 of the entire project, but for the Justice Sports Complex itself, it's about a 33.42% contribution. The city's incentives to date have been primarily retail, multifamily, residential, and industrial projects. The Paragon Star Sports Complex and the TIF plan is the only other incentivized, sports-focused private development. And this indoor sports complex is the what that makes it unique. This, this particular indoor complex that's going to accommodate volleyball, basketball, soccer, family entertainment, physical therapy, and a cafe. I mean, that is what is unique to this. It is also an opportunity for the city of Lee's Summit to be in real time with other development in the metro area. When the Paragon Star project came along, we were behind. We didn't, they already had, Shields was already constructed, Swope was already constructed, Garmin was under construction. We were behind in getting the kind of facilities this We were behind in getting the kind of facilities this community deserves for the sports industry. So this is an opportunity because we're not behind. But why do, why the 100% property tax abatement? Because we need it for this project. As we discussed, the indoor sports entertainment venues are not sales tax generators. These facilities are community assets, but they are not profit centers. And the unpredictability of real property taxes in Jackson County is a threat to the financial stability of the project. These projects are community culture builders, but they are not moneymakers. Frankly, without this incentive, this project is not financially feasible. These projects need incentives to either build the project with public money and then let the private sector pay their taxes on an annual basis, or let private industry spend the money to build the project and then give the property tax relief on the other side. One side or the other needs to happen to make these, these types of projects feasible. So this project and for this project, a tax abatement of 100% for 25 years works. So Rachel indicated that we would be talking about a summary. So similar to the city's entry into the industrial incentive marketplace, which was an industry, the entry into this industry deserves the kind of comparison, and that's what we're trying to provide for you tonight. It's valuable to look at how these facilities are being developed. We entered this industry in real time with the other regional facilities, and we compete with a $21 million investment over 25 years. That's $21 million investment over 25 years with exponential economic positive impact and a largely recession-proof industry. Our kids will play sports. Our elders need to continue to be, to move. So that's one of the positive things about what these statistics are telling us, at least from a financial perspective. But when I say we are in real time, you can see that Blue Hawk was approved in 2022 and is just coming online. Wind Out was approved in 2023, Des Moines in 2019, and you heard about that success and what's coming forward from there. And so we would be in 2025, so we would be real time entering this industry and taking our dollars back from where they're, they're, back to our community. Just as this city made its first significant TIF investment in Summit Woods Shopping Center, when our community was saying, we're tired of going to 39th Street to go shopping. Bring us some shopping here. This, this community responded, and it has been a, a huge economic benefit. This community spent, has allocated, allocated in a TIF plan about $25 million for a outdoor sports complex. It's been built. The tournaments are coming. The economics is happening. So this $21 million investment with no risk to this community brings a competitive basketball, volleyball, and soccer families back, our families back, those 2,000 kids and their parents back to our community. And it, it also creates this opportunity to be a Destination Youth Sports location for all of those, those sport, those, those categories of sport. O'Leary Park invested $51 million in Blue Hawk, 58.66% of the project costs. Wyandotte invested $53 million in their Homeland Indoor Multi-Sport Complex, 88.74% of the costs. The Recplex, West Des Moines invested $32,900,000 in that location, 55.0% of the project costs. We are here standing today as, as the View High Sports Entertainment Facility, asking for a $21 million investment, which reflects 42.7, 47% of the overall project and 33.42% of the sports complex building itself. So with that, our team is here, our owners are here to answer any questions. We respectfully request your favorable consideration of this request and would love the opportunity to answer questions and respond to comments by staff and the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning for the city. This is probably the most thorough conceptual presentation that the city council is ever going to see. The documentation by the developer has been outstanding for a conceptual presentation, and I can't imagine what more they will add if this proceeds, speaking to the quality of the presentation that's been made so far. And so a lot of what you're going to hear from me, a little bit of repeat because they've been very thorough, but you can take that as confirmation, my confirmation of their data and my analysis that I will explain to you. So I start with my traditional analysis of the request, and we start with a timeline summary. So during the construction period, as you've heard, the sales and use tax exemption is the request at 100%. So they would be purchasing the materials without paying sales tax, and that's the benefit that we'll quantify. And then for 25 years, the request is 100% property tax abatement and then a rebate or a return of 1.5% of the city's combined 2.75% taxes that would be generated by the project. And then for 27 years, they're proposing the CID sales tax at 1%. So in a timeline perspective, that's the request. The second thing that we look at then is the benefit to the taxing districts. And as you'll see from this chart, this is unusual, but it's all zeros in this case. And as you've heard, that's because the property is tax exempt today, owned by the church. It would presumably continue to be tax exempt if this project doesn't happen, continue to be owned by the church. And then their request is 100% tax abatement, so this is, this chart is zeros across the board. The value of the incentive request to the developer, as they've indicated, and I agree with the analysis and their numbers, total project cost of about 49.2, .3 million. And then this is the quantification of the incentive request. So the value of the sales tax exemption, which is dollar savings right at the outset, about 3.4%. The net present value of the property tax abatement at 7% discount rate, which is a little high, but that's what the interest rates indicate today, is about 30% of the total project cost. And then the CID plus the city's sales tax redirection, which is the new revenue stream, is about 9.1%. So as the developer indicated, about a 42%, 42.5% incentive request. And then the impact to the city, the sales and use tax exemption, this number here is about 23% of this number, which is what you've traditionally seen from similar requests. The real property tax abatement, the city's portion of the property tax bill is about 17%. So the city's portion of this property tax abatement is about 17% of that number. And then the city's sales tax redirection, which is their request, that's the 1.5% of the city's 2.75% total sales taxes. The impact to the city is about 2.1 million from that request. So the city's portion is about 24% of the total incentive request, which indicates, as we've seen in many cases in the past, some leveraging in that the, the impact of the incentives are not borne entirely by the city, but are borne in some cases by other taxing districts based on the property taxes and the sales taxes that are imposed by other jurisdictions. This then is my summary of, as you've seen in the past, my summary of the incentive request, the simple summary, one page. So you've got the CID, which is a new sales tax, and then the city's sales tax redirection or rebate. And as I explained, that's about half, 1.5% of the city's 2.75% total sales taxes. The estimated financial benefit is here. This is the same number I showed you on the last page. And then the second incentive is Chapter 100 with the sales tax exemption and the real property tax abatement, again, quantifying those, leading to the same conclusion that I showed you in the previous slide. I did not mean to go to that slide yet. So that's my quantification, and it does match what the developer has indicated. And in, one thing that I'll mention here is, as I've told you in the past, there is an extensive amount of discussion that goes on before this comes to you, even at the conceptual stage. And evidence of that is that the developer in this case has seen the format that I've used. We've talked about this, and they've adopted this on many of the slides they've seen to compare with other jurisdictions, which I think is, is helpful for you to see in apples-to-apples kind of comparison. This then is the chart that you've seen many times. This is all of the incentives that the city has, city council has approved since 2000 for all of our major projects. There's a few LCRA certificate of qualifications that aren't included on here, but this is an updated chart which shows just about everything that the city council has approved. And we'll go to the summary down here at the bottom, which is probably the most relevant. I've included the View High Sports Complex on this chart to see as a point of comparison. And as has been extensively discussed, this would be the most significant incentive request that the city council has seen in the last 25 years. It's at 42.5%, which would be the single highest by the percentage, the single highest abatement and incentive request that the city council has seen. And then we've seen the averages over here. You've heard extensive testimony from the developer why that is, and they've indicated that this is essentially like a new market that the city council is now considering with this incentive request. And I think I would agree with that. The major categories that we've dealt with in the past, obviously, commercial, residential, and industrial. And as the, as the, they just indicated in the presentation, when the city council first started entertaining incentive requests for significant industrial projects, that was a new market, and we didn't have a lot of data to go on. So we started looking at what other cities do, and that's been our point of comparison. I think the developer has appropriately done that in this case because we don't have any, any data sets to compare this to in Lee's Summit, so we're looking to other cities. And I think that's a, that's an appropriate point of comparison. That's the last slide that I had. The next slide is just the site plan in case we need to reference that, but we have many other versions of that that are available from the developer slides. So I will finish with a few other points to address some of the things that have been discussed and some questions that I, I think you would naturally be thinking about. So I'll start by addressing one question that was asked earlier. Why, in a sequence, why do we do the zoning and then the incentive discussion, which is a question that Councilmember Pryor asked? Our logic behind this is if we did the incentive discussion first, you might not understand the project as well as if you see the zoning application first. You have a thorough understanding of what the project is, how it looks, the look and the feel of it, the layout, et cetera. And that's, that's why we do the zoning, we do the zoning hearings first. But as we've discussed, you've only had first reading of the zoning and you've moved forward with that. Another point that has been raised, risk level. The, the argument, this is low risk for the city. I think I would agree with that when you compare to the other option, which would be issuing debt or the city putting in some sort of cash upfront for the project. So this is pay-as-you-go. They're not requesting, they are requesting bonds to be issued through Chapter 100, but that's developers' money that they're investing. It's not city money being put into the project. The city's essentially the conduit issue like all of our other Chapter 100 projects that you've approved in the past. So I would agree that it's fairly low risk from the standpoint of no debt being issued, no city upfront money, the developer has to finance this project and then be successful and receive the revenues or the benefits of the incentive package over time to realize the return. One other point that was mentioned is, does this set precedent and how much, or does this set a precedent, how much does this set a precedent, those sort of things? I would respond by saying ultimately, the city council determines what the precedent is. This is a very unique project, and so if you receive a similar request for a similar type of project, this might be presidential. But I would argue that for industrial, doesn't really set a precedent. For residential, really has no bearing. And for commercial, possibly. However, most of our commercial projects are shopping centers, shopping center rehab projects, new large shopping centers, Oldham Village, Streets of West Pryor, those are some, Discovery Park, those are some of the larger incentivized projects. So this is a, a unique project that's being presented to you. We don't have a lot of data in Lee's Summit, and so I think it's appropriate to look at the data sets that they presented from other jurisdictions. And the last thing I'll mention is that, like the Star Bonds and the debt that's been issued in other jurisdictions, Star Bonds in Kansas, that takes advantage of the fact that the state is essentially contributing its sales tax to the project also. That's available in Lee's Summit, but only in a very limited way, and that would be through state TIF, which could be used for, in the downtown area, for example. So there, there are options which the city has not used in recent memory where we are able to tap into the state's sales tax increment through an incentive package, which is not available for Lee's Summit except for projects like in the downtown area. And so that's something that we really, the city, you as a city council can't compete with in terms of what you can provide as compared to Star Bonds in Kansas, for example. And that's why those incentive packages have been significantly higher in other jurisdictions. I think that's it. Those are all the notes that I jotted down while the discussion was occurring, so I will stop there and we can discuss and I can answer questions.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Very thorough presentation, and then Mr. Bushak has presented it just like he always has with the similar charts so that it is something that we can compare and relate to. So who would like to start us off? Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bushak, this is probably just a nitpicky thing. On your, on your chart of all the incentive requests, at the bottom, the, I think it's the TNW, is that 565 million supposed to be like 565,000 or something? I was just looking, I was, I was trying to look and see like where, where this compared to all the others in terms of actual abatement, and I was like, that?
Yeah, that number is not accurate.
Okay, and that, but that doesn't throw off your other averages, does it?
No. I think this number down here is still accurate, the percentages, and that's just the typo that we need to correct.
Okay, no worries. I was just, I was just looking at it, I was like, wait. As far as the comparator projects that the developer selected around the metro, around the Midwest, do you think those are kind of representative of these sorts of projects? Are, are, do you know of other projects that seem to fall in the same kind of range for incentive levels?
I think they're comparable projects, and I don't really have anything else for us to point at in Lee's Summit. And if this proceeds, when there's the formal hearings, one of the things I would like to do is a little more digging into other similar projects, but this is what the developers presented. I'm sure the data is accurate regarding what they're presenting, but we don't have a comparable data set.
I guess that's what I'm sort of curious about. I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it's, it's their job, present the best comparables for the argument that they're making, and I just want to make sure that we're getting a full representative sample of what projects like this around the region or Midwest might look like, just to see if those really are in line with kind of the average incentives that you see out there.
Yes, so one of the things that has come to mind both in preparing for this meeting and then listening to all the discussion tonight is, this is just the conceptual presentation. So as I mentioned, this is a very thorough conceptual presentation by the developer. They presented to you just about all the data that I could think of that they could present. However, there will be more homework on our part if this proceeds and when we get into the formal hearings.
And I guess this might be a question for the developer. Did those other projects that you had as comparables include the same kind of mixed-use concept in terms of having medical professionals onsite rehab facilities, maybe some restaurant to retail? Is it the same, is it really the same economic model, or is that something new that you guys are adding?
The Blue Hawk, so there was no, for the Recplex in West Des Moines, Iowa, there is absolutely no retail component. It was just the sports facility. There's no office component as well. For Blue Hawk and for Home Field, I don't believe that there was any office space inside. I think it was just sporting facilities. There is additional retail components in future phases for Blue Hawk. Blue Hawk, the indoor sports park was the anchor tenant, so it was expected to be, if it's successful, additional phases of development would follow. I was going to say, I don't know if they're still on, but the Sports Facilities Advisory, we mentioned they consult nationally. They have data on how this incentive request compares to other incentive requests for similar facilities nationally that they have worked on. I just don't know if they're still awake because they're in Florida and it's 11:20. He hasn't responded yet, but.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that a little bit. So my name's Gary Smolsho with Sports Facilities Companies. We're based out of Clearwater Beach, Florida. Just from my perspective, again, I haven't done a lot of digging into some of the financial models and incentives that have been presented, but from a percentage standpoint, certainly I think the request is reasonable. Our company manages about 70-plus different facilities across the country right now, and we work on about 300 projects on the advisory side, financial forecasting, that sort of stuff. So as we move past this conceptual presentation, I think we could be helpful in providing other examples. other examples. And again, no two projects are really identic, identical, but I think we could provide other examples of how the funding structure sort of came to fruition with other projects with similar business models. So some of the ones that we used, certainly reasonable, and I think the ask is reasonable from my perspective.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I, part of what I, why I was asking that is I wondered if that impacted your, your revenue stream very much? If you're, if you're going to generate significant revenue off of those office space as well as the sports facility? Because it sounds like typically, these are almost like a public improvement, that it's, it's, the actual sports courts aren't generating a lot of revenue necessarily enough to pay for the cost of building the facility without the incentives, but does that calculus change with the, the medical office component?
Is that a question for me?
It's probably a question for the developer, since this is more specific to their project.
Justin Beebe, 3D Builders, 404 Southwest Waterfall Court, Lee Summit. I just want to make sure I understand your question. Can you hear me? So on your question, are you asking about the revenue from the physical rehab?
Yeah, so you're, you're saying that to make this project feasible, you need these incentives. You're comparing it to other projects, but those projects didn't have the same office components. I'm just asking, does that generate more revenue than maybe these other projects would? Or why do you still need this level of incentive?
I don't think it has any bearing. So the, it's only 5,000 square feet of physical rehab space within this building, and that's at about $30 a square foot. So we're talking 150,000 in revenue per year, roughly estimated, on that specific piece of the building. So I, I don't think it makes.
Was, was the overall office space like 30,000, or was it just that?
So they're referring to that in general as the office space, but 30,000 square feet, that is where the cafe is, that's where the golf simulators are, the arcade, the merchandise stores for the clubs, and then the active play area, which is kind of the indoor playground, and the speed and agility training center, and the physical rehab. That, all of those different components comprise what we just consider the office space or the non-court space.
And when you, when you kind of figured out what incentive you wanted to ask for, was it based on trying to get to a certain rate of return for the investment? Or was it just looking at comparable cities and seeing what's kind of standard for the industry, or are those really linked together?
I mean, probably being too transparent, but just the returns that our model showed, that with the significant tax burden of a building of this cost, there is not enough profit left to incentivize any investors. So without the tax incentive, without the tax abatement, it's just, there's not enough profit to make the project work.
Thank you. I think those are all my questions for right now. I feel like if, if we move forward with this, I would really want some more information about some additional comparator projects in other areas and what that's looked like in more detail. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor Tim Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. I would agree 100%. This is definitely the most unique conceptual incentive request I think I've been part of for the whole time I've been on council. Just unique all the way around, the type of business plan and compared to industrial and other type of retail type incentive projects that we've approved here recently. So, yeah, so the first glance is, that number's pretty high. I don't think we've ever, time since I've been here, I've ever approved full 100% tax abatement for the entire 25-year period. So my initial reaction is like a little bit of shock. However, I get it. This is very unique. This is a catalyst, game changer type, for the reasons I said earlier when y'all did the conceptual on the, the site plan. So I could feel comfortable moving forward. This is conceptual. You want our, our opinion right now. I could feel comfortable. I think kind of like Councilmember Shields, I'd like to see a little bit more detail, a little bit more deep dive in the numbers. Mr. Bushak, you, we're talking about one, one and a half percent of the 2.75 of the tax, use tax and sales tax. What does that mean? I mean, I know we, we generate zero right now, but want to have at least a comfort level of some hope, glimmer of hope of some kind of revenue during that 25, 30-year period that the city, besides the economic activity and other, you know, district-wide kind of revenue.
Yes. So this is a simple chart of all the taxes. This is sort of the base sales taxes that apply in Lee Summit before any special taxes at any, you know, a CID or a TDD that might be in place at a particular location. And so if you focus on the cities, five sales taxes in the middle, general, transportation, capital improvements, parks, public safety, a brief bit of history, the developer, and I mentioned that this has been through different iterations, the developer's original request when they first approached the city was instead of the city's sales tax contribution was a contribution of the city's business and industry tax that would be generated by the additional room nights from this project throughout the city. So their original request, and that's the, the 5% hotel gross receipts tax that Lee Summit charges to all hotels in the city. So their original request was to a rebate of the business and industry tax that would result from the nights that they generate from the project. The feedback that we collectively provided was the city council's never done that before. The city council's never entertained that request. We've heard that request a few times, but it's never really gone anywhere. So they steered their, and that part of the incentive request to what you're asking about, which is the sales tax. And so looking at the numbers in the city's sales tax, it's essentially a request for the city to pay to them the full 1% general sales tax and the capital improvement sales tax, the one in the middle, to the developer for qualifying costs from the sales taxes that are generated by this project only. So the city would still retain the transportation, parks, and public safety sales tax component, and the city, if you approve this, the city would be paying over to the developer an amount equal to the 1% general and the 0.5% capital improvement sales tax for eligible costs. And that would be a revenue stream, just like the CID is a new revenue stream for the developer.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, like I said, I can, I can warm up to this. The initial numbers are socky, and I'll just repeat that, but, but this is unique, and I get it. There's economic activity benefits from that whole district, that whole corridor, that I know will happen. I like the sports theme that was mentioned earlier. But kind of like, again, like Councilmember Shields said, moving forward, if we take that next step tonight, yeah, a few more comparison, more apple-to-apple comparisons to the other, other projects that were, that were identified. Just, just to have a better idea before we completely approve it, I, I know it's conceptual. I know that it, you, it's not truly apples-to-apples what's going on in Des Moines, West Des Moines, the facility in Wyandotte County. Blue Hawk might be probably the most similar, but I know they have other development components to their, their, their project. But for now, I think, I think that would, that's something that would help me as well to continue to move forward. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fong.
Thank you, Mayor. So for, I guess for the applicant, Mr. Beebe, so you're going to have the, kind of going off of what Councilmember Shields said, the physical therapy would be something you would lease out, obviously. But would the strength training, the cafe, according to your rendings, that's a pretty good-sized cafe. Is that something that's owned and operated, or is that something that would be leased out to a specific group?
All of the components within the building will be operated by the owner with the exception of the medical, physical rehab.
Okay.
And there'll be some office space in there for clubs, club ownership, club management. And that's youth sports clubs.
Okay. And Mr. Bushak, just some of these sports venues, like kind of did a little homework. They go out and they receive sponsors, and something else that was mentioned, they get some donors. How would that affect our package if they're going and receiving a sponsor from, I mean, just, just say it's a big.
I don't think it would affect the package in terms of, like, that wouldn't be a variable that impacts you saying yes or no to this incentive request, if that's, if that's what you're looking for. I mean, that would be, it sounds like, if I'm following your question, that would be one of many potential revenue sources that, for the project, but that doesn't really have a bearing, that has a bearing on the overall incentive request, I suppose, because that's one of many revenue sources for the project, but I don't think that particular fact has particular bearing on the incentive request they're making. Hope, I'm not sure if that answers your question.
I think it does. I mean, I think it would be more, I guess I could direct the question to 3D is if they're trying to acquire a facility sponsor. And that would help a bearing on my consideration of this ask, if they're going to, if they're seeking another revenue stream as well as seeking the city as a revenue stream, I think that's important.
Yeah, right.
We would need to understand that if they're doing that or not doing that.
So it's, if I'm following, it sounds like the question is, to what extent does their advertising and their sponsorships play a role in the revenue that they generate for the project?
Sure.
Right. So I think that would be a question for the developer to either answer tonight, or if this proceeds, answer in more detail at, at the public hearings.
Okay. And I think, hey, that's probably all I have, is maybe understanding from them if there is going to be a sponsorship, or if they're seeking something like that. But I would consider looking at this further. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. I think they're kind of all alluding to your return on investment. They want to know what your, what your revenue sources are, that's, that's giving you a percentage, and you can provide that. There's different ways to do that. You can try to, try to show us, it gets a little wonky if you do that, or you can show it to Mr. Bushak and have him present it to us, saying, okay, here's, here's, here's the general layout of this, and yes, I've confirmed that they are, they're at a, whether it's a 3% return, 5% return, 7% return, whatever it would be, we have seen that in modeling before through Mr. Bushak. Have we not, Mr. Bushak? Okay.
So, yes, we'll work with him to provide the information you're requesting, but to answer Councilman Fong's question, yes, we do have sponsorship. It's already included in the model, and that's based off of.
That's what we need to know.
Information provided by SFA. We use that data to build out our model of revenue, and it includes sponsorship, and it's already reflected in our request at, at that level. But we'll work with staff to provide the information that you need.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
I think it's my suss more for Mr. Bushak. So whenever I'm looking at incentives, I know I always like to ask, you know, does the public, the public benefit outweigh the cost burden? And I hate to even say cost burden in this because it's not necessarily a burden to the city, so maybe does the public benefit or even revenue to surrounding businesses outweigh the incentive ask? Is that a fair question?
Yeah, I think it is. And, and so it sounds like that would be a comparison of, you know, what's the cost to the city, the price tag that you're looking at here? What, what would the city be giving up as compared to what are the spinoff benefits? What are the economic benefits of people coming, staying overnight, shopping, going to restaurants, other economic activity? The developers presented a lot of information about that from the other projects. The one thing that I'll say is, again, we don't have a data set for that for ourselves, and generally, not for this type of project, but for any incentivized project, and focusing probably mostly on commercial, a bit on industrial, as a staff team, we've actually talked quite a bit about our ability or inability to quantify that for you. It's very hard because there are so many variables. And every time, and we've had, you know, multiple hour-long study sessions amongst our staff team of how can we quantify this? And there's, it's really hard because there are so many variables associated with every project that goes into who are the shoppers there, what's their, what's the revenue of the shoppers, where is this located as opposed to other locations of the city? It's on the edge of the city as opposed to in the middle of the city? That's, that's probably a very important variable. Point is, there's so many variables, it's very hard to come up with a data set that allows us to say, based on this project and these shoppers, it's going to generate X for the city and spinoff benefits. We just have not been able to quantify that. However, one of the things that I have seen is, as this, as, look at the last 25 years, so the chart that I show you, go back to the year 2000, the city's provided extensive incentives for lots of projects. And if you drive down Chipman Road, I could, I could take a drive with you and point out the TIFs and the CIDs and the TDDs and John Knox Village, 353, a lot of incentives, and yet Chipman, for example, that's a major corridor that generates a lot of revenue for the city. And the city, over the last 25 years, our budget has continued to grow. The one thing that I probably could point to is revenue generated for the city based on our population growth after factoring these incentives. The city has somehow done very well, even though it's given a lot of incentives to a lot of commercial and industrial projects. So we know we're doing something right, but it's very hard to quantify. That's, that's sort of the best I can say at this point, but that's something that I'm, I would like to work on more if I had more, more time to do that.
Okay. So, so it's hard, you're saying it's hard to really break down because you don't know the specific people coming to the facility, who's going to use that time to shop, who's going to use that time to get gas there at that specific, in Lee Summit and all of that? But overall, we do know that some will.
Right. And, and you've indicated that from your sports and your, your children in sports. I've done that. I've traveled to Kansas. I've been to hundreds of soccer and volleyball and wrestling tournaments in other jurisdictions, and same thing that you mentioned, and I think a lot of us have too. So that's very common, and we know that people will be coming here, and they will shop, and they will eat here, so.
Okay. So I guess the way I look at this is, yeah, it's, it's unique, but again, as everybody's saying, it's a unique project, and I think we need something in this city. So, and I guess I kind of view it too as it's sort of a project, in my mind, that provides a service to our citizens. So it's, I, I always like, when we're incentivizing something that is providing some sort of service to more than just the person developing it. Because I know we get a lot of flack for ever incentivizing, say, apartments or stuff like that, but, you know, it's hard for the community because they're not the ones necessarily using it, they're already living in the community. So whereas this is something where it's providing something that we don't have, it's a service that they're not having to drive far to. So I feel like it's something that's actually a community benefit, so I, I feel like I can wrap my mind around an incentive like this more so than maybe other industries that we do incentivize on, you know? And the uniqueness of it, I feel like I can grasp it a little better because I always like the feel, you know, when people can touch, feel, see, X dollars going towards something that they can actually use.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that analysis because even though on its face, this is a commercial endeavor, this is a commercial facility, it's a private commercial facility, but it's not like, you know, a shopping center where you walk in and you just shop. It has, like the, like the developer team has indicated, it has other, depends on how you characterize it, cultural or public benefits, which is the health benefits, the exercise, the climate of exercising, going to sporting events, the activities associated with families going to sporting events. There's a lot of benefit in that that you don't get from other commercial projects. And I, and, and ultimately, it's up to you, the city council, to decide what weight you place on that and, and make your decision.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be honest, this is a lot for me. I mean, it's a lot. I can see some of these reimbursements for certain project costs, but this is a lot. And it's going to take a pretty big hurdle to get over that for me, and I don't even know what that is right now, so I'm, I'm not trying to say you gotta, whatever, give me more. I don't even know, I don't even know what to give. I mean, I know that we're saying that, that this is something that we don't have in Lee Summit, and we don't have an indoor soccer field in Lee Summit, but, you know, we did just open another indoor sporting facility in Lee Summit this month, I think, maybe? So I don't, I wasn't here when they opened, but I don't think they came and asked for incentive to open that facility at all. So I don't, I don't know what level of incentive I would be happy with, or I would feel comfortable with. I don't even know, but it's a lot for me. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so I'll, I'll say a few comments and questions. Mr. Bushak, let's talk about star bonds and such. They're, they're actually issuing, the state actually issues, and, and in Iowa and Kansas, they actually. in Iowa and Kansas, they actually put money into, and issue, I guess, debt.
Case of star bonds is the state sales tax increment that's dedicated to the project. The, the comparison would be, if you approve a TIF plan, you're, the city would be capturing 50% of the sales tax revenues that are generated from the project, which would capture the city, the county, and the zoo district, not the state, however, in the case of star bonds.
So the state's paying itself back. They're issuing the debt, though, and they're-
I think the locality issues the debt, but the state contributes its sales tax increment also.
I got you. Interesting. Okay. We don't have that ability, so we, we have to deal with the end that we're dealt, is what I always say. And technically, it's pay-as-you-go. So, we're not technically out, we're not issuing debt, we're, we are giving up the opportunity lost of bringing in sales tax revenues. Okay. Then, I noticed there's not any comparator sites in Missouri on here. That'd be nice if there was one. I don't know that I would consider the one that just opened, because this one's so much bigger. I don't know how much of a, we can compare to that, but I think that if we're gonna, if we're gonna do something like this, you know, this is fairly low risk with regard to, like you said, the, the pay-as-you-go. Yes, we're giving up sales tax that we're not currently bringing in, but I thought the presentation was really good. I thought the, the whole point of this being a catalyst for that area, I thought that was, I think, if you look at that map, the CID map that they have, it's not a big area, it just has the commercial property in front of the church. I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna, we're gonna give up sales tax in front of the church where we're not even collecting any property tax right now. And they're gonna create basically the sales tax within their own building. I, I just find that really fairly low risk with the pay-as-you-go, and I think that it's going to bring a lot of multiplier effects. We, that's what I call it, with the sales tax revenues. I know it's hard to quantify it, but I'd be willing to go higher than what we've done on other incentives, because I don't think we're going to be approving another facility like this in the next 10 years, because we do have a fieldhouse coming. And we did just invest, I don't know how much, Mr. Dunning, how mu, or Mr. Bushak, how much did we, is our fieldhouse costing? I mean, it's, it's, huh, 25? I mean, we are actually putting in $25 million towards a fieldhouse, so that we can bring day visitors here from other communities, from not just around the metro, but from everywhere, and provide services to our own community members, because I know Mr. Snook wants to point out that we're going to use that space every day, not just on the weekends. And I think that's going to be the case here with this facility. I, I don't know, I, I see, I see it almost just like the fieldhouse partnership. I mean, I, I don't mean to, I know that's not our city project, but I see this as a partnership. And if it's a partnership, we're giving these funds opportunity to, to have these funds, because they're not really dollars coming straight out of our coffers. I see that as a great opportunity for us to make, make things happen for the soccer community. And I do think that Lee Summit's become known for soccer. We, how many, we've got high schools that are winning championships. We've got, we were not known as a soccer town 15, 20 years ago, like we are now. We, we have a huge following, like, like people have pointed out. Yeah, I think it's a big ask, but I definitely like the creativity, and I, I could get behind, I could get behind this, this if you could provide more information, like the council member said, return on investment, they want to see your, your pro formas, they want to see your spreadsheets, and they want to know that you're not making a 10 or 12% return on this, because we don't want, I'm sorry, we don't want you to make a 10 or 12% return if we're, if it's going to be our sale, our sales tax dollars. And I, and I think we've got a really savvy council that wants to see those numbers, and they want to see them go through David Bushak so that he can tell us that, yeah, they're not making 10, 12%. I've checked their numbers. Sorry, Mr. Bushak, more work for you, but you, 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 you don't let us down ever on that kind of stuff. So, the other thing that, that was said that they, they want to see, oh, the comparators, I, I like these comparators, but, yeah, I, I think there's a reason there's not one in Missouri, or not something that you didn't pull, because Missouri doesn't make it easy, you know? Jackson County could participate. Why are you laughing? They could-
Sports authority.
They could participate and help with this incentive. All right. So I, I think, I think, like always, we're, we're going to have to make it happen on our own if we want to do something like this, and we've got local people that want to invest here and do it. I like that. That's kind of cool. I'm supportive. And I want more info, but I'm supportive. Councilmember Pryor?
Thanks. I didn't know if you just wanted to hear from everyone, so I just wanted to say, I too want more info, but I am in support of it. If, if it doesn't go here, it's going to go into another city. So I'd rather see it come here, because I'm tired of 10 years down the road, 15 down, years down the road, looking at something and being like, oh, we had a shot, Lee Summit had a shot at that, and we turned it away, and I really wish we wouldn't have. Because we have done that a lot in the past. So, I'm, I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I do think those places in front of the church, if they, if the church is going to sell those, that CID, then I think people are going to want to be there. In front of the church, that's one of the biggest churches in town, in front of this. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. I am just going to say I support it, and I think it's going to turn out to be way better than we ever imagined, because I think it's going to be a nice economic boom for us. Thank you.
All right. I think you've heard from everybody. Councilmember Level had to go. He's, he's on the East Coast, I think, too. But I appreciated him hanging in there. And I, I think we've got a lot on the table here. I think you have direction, Ms. Orr and Ms. Bushak, you got direction, and gentlemen. So, there's, there's a chance, real, you know, I think a, a real chance here that something can be worked out. You've already been approved on the, for the first reading, not the second, but the first reading on the, on the view, on the zoning. I don't know, I think you've, you may have, I'm glad that you picked Lee Summit to present this. You could have chosen somewhere else. So, why don't we, why don't we go back to the books and you guys decide if you want to bring this forward and continue on. Is that good? All right. Thank you. And I didn't say it earlier when you did the rezoning, but thank you for investing in Lee Summit. Okay. Wow, council. I'm so proud of you all.
Better hurry up.
Oh, oh, oh. Okay. We got to keep going. She's, she knows, when that clock hits 11, she's all over me. Yep, yep, yep. Well, the city clerk, please read, resolution number 2305.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2505. A resolution authorizing the mayor to appoint successor directors to the Streets of West Park Community Improvement District.
Okay. I really can't see it. My eyes are blurry at 11 o'clock at night, so, is, what number is it?
2505.
2505. Okay. She read it correctly. Okay. Is there a motion? Yes. Councilmember Shields' motions to adopt. Councilmember Carlisle seconds. Discussion. Being none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's unanimous, 8-0. Thank you. Proposed ordinances, first reading. Councilmember Funk, would you please read, bill number 25 dash 053?
That's fair. I move to advance the second reading, bill number 25 dash 053, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 102 for the Third Street, Bridlewood Drive, Pearl Boulevard, and Todd George Parkway and Chipman Road, traffic signals to Custom Lighting Services LLC, DBA Black and McDonald, in the amount of $792,170 and 10 cents, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading by council member, or, of bill number 25 dash 053 by councilmember Funk, seconded by councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Yes. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask generally for the first readings tonight, why, why these are on first reading opposed to having come through committee or anything?
Because they got canceled on here.
Well, there you go. See?
Public Works Committee, we thought we were going to hit Public Works Committee, but we had National League of Cities and, yeah, we didn't have a quorum, so.
Okay. And is that the same for all three of these items?
All, the last one would, would, would have probably, probably gone to finance, but that's, that's in agreement with the states, bringing all those straight to, straight. First two were scheduled for Public Works.
Sounds good. I just wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass 8-0. Thank you. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read, bill number 25 dash 054?
I advance to second reading, bill number 25 dash 054, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a ground lease agreement by and between the City of Lee Summit and LS Management Services LLC for a period of 30 years, with options for two additional 10-year terms for the development of a hangar located on the west side of the North Apron at the Lee Summit Municipal Airport, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the same.
Hey, sir.
How's it going?
Want to tell us what's going on with this one?
You bet. Yeah, Joel Arrington, Airport Manager.
Thanks for sticking around all night.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, right. Goodness. Okay. Yeah. So approval of this ordinance would authorize the execution of ground lease agreement with Lee Summit Management LLC to construct a hangar on the, you know, the west side of the North Apron. If, there should be an exhibit in the, in the packet, but if you'd like me to put it up on the screen, I'd be more than happy to give you an idea of where that's at. This hangar will be a 100-foot by 120-foot aircraft hangar, comes in about 22,950 square feet. That includes the hangar, parking lot, additional apron. The initial annual rent for this is going to be $9,400. We'll be holding that rate for them for the first five years, and then, starting at the sixth year, there will be a CPI increase to get them caught up, to kind of help them get going. And then, after that, there'll be annual CPI increases, which is what we do with the rest of the hangars. So, we'll be have, two businesses are going to be occupying inside this hangar. There'll be Midwest Avionics, who is currently operating at the airport, and Summit Flight Academy, who also is a current operator at the airport. They'll be moving out of our hangars, which they currently rent, into this new one, so that'll give us a little bit of extra space. So this, the lease term is 30 years plus two additional 10-year renewals. So they're going to have this hangar for a, a very long time. The lease terms are very, very similar to what we've done in the past. Normally, actually, we do like a 20-year lease, but because they're bringing a very unique business to the airport and a flight school, and to help them recoup some of their initial investment in this hangar, we decided to go a little bit longer on the lease term. The lease also contains a comprehensive indemnification insurance provisions. In the event that they stop paying their bills, the, there's a provision and therefore the, the city to take over the hangar. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and see that, I see that I have a motion to move to second reading by councilmember Hodges, seconded by councilmember Shields. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it passes 8-0. And Mr. Arrington, hey, I saw those renderings of the terminal to go along with the hangar. You need to get those out. Those are cool.
Yes, it's a-
Those are really cool.
It's going to be a great-looking facility.
I mean, and those are gorgeous renderings.
It's going to be a beautiful hangar, yeah. We put a lot of work into the design and-
Can I share those, or those public?
Oh, yeah, you can share them, yeah.
All right. Well, we need to get them out. Those are cool.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember, what? What'd you say? Okay. We've got bill number 25054 on the floor by councilmember Pryor. Would you please read it, though?
I move-
255055. Yeah.
I move to advance to a second reading, bill number 25 dash 055, an ordinance approving the tax credit agreement between the Missouri Development Finance Board and the City of Lee Summit, Missouri for the Green Street project.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25 dash 055 by councilmember Pryor, seconded by councilmember Shields. Discussion. Yes. Councilmember Rader?
I wanted to ask Mr. Bushak to come up and tell us what this is.
Well, this is-
Don't hate me for this, but I-
This is good news stuff, so we don't mind good news stuff.
So, this is a Green Street success story. I have a chart that I put together in case somebody asks this question.
Ah!
That's awesome.
Love it.
That's the handwritten version. This is the more professional version. And so, the way this works is, starting at the top, the city, we have the project across the street. We applied in '23 for what's called the Tax Credits for Contribution Program that's run by MDFB, which is the Missouri Development Finance Board, a state agency. We were approved last year for a $3 million tax credit. And what that means is, how it works, if we're successful in getting donors who contribute to the project, those contributions go into the project account that's maintained by MDFB, and then all of those monies are advanced to the project. For every contribution, in the minimum amount of 5,000, maximum amount of 6,000, MDFB will issue a 50% tax credit for that donation. So for a $6 million donation by the city, which is, which is eligible under this program, the city will receive a $3 million tax credit that if we're successful, we can sell. And if we can sell it for 90 cents on the dollar, then that would be 2.7 million in additional cash that flows to the project. So, this is a leveraging of $6 million of our cash into this program to get hopefully an additional, from what I calculated up here, if we're successful at 90%, that's 2.7 million. At 80%, that's my scribble, that's 2.4 million. So if we can sell these tax credits for between 80 and 90%, we'll receive an additional 2.4 to 2.7 million cash into the project, leveraging our $6 million.
And you know what? He asked me to, like, be a part of the presentation, and I didn't understand any of this.
I know.
But I talked about how wonderful our downtown was, and did my part.
I got a hallway response this afternoon, so. It was good. It was good, David. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and '23, a team consisting of the mayor, Mr. Dunning, Mr. Elam, and Brandon with Lane 4. They, we all went to Jeff City, made our initial presentation, and then Mr. Elam and I went again last year, and then they approved the, the award last year for us.
Do you have that all coming up?
That's a good question. So we initially made a joint request for the public components and the private components, and the reason it took an extra year is because they eventually agreed to essentially bifurcate our requests. So this award is just for the public components that are being constructed right now, and we can make a second request for the private components with Lane 4, or with, with whatever party steps forward with, with any incentive request, so we can make a second run at this request, and I think we probably will be in short order this year.
Genius. Love it. All right.
I can see how this ran.
Yeah. No? All right. Well done, sir. Any further discussion? All right. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes 8-0. Committee reports.
We'll have rules committee Thursday at 11:30 via Zoom.
Excellent. Okay. Not seeing any more committee reports. Council comments. I already told you about the Jeff City trip and the NLC trip, the Washington DC trip, but I just want you all to know, I appreciate all of you trying to make it. I felt really bad on the Jeff City day because it was snowing again. So, and then the Washington DC trip, just to think that there was- think that there was a few of us there, I mean, not just me, like it used to be years and years ago, and we've, we had four of us there, so that was really nice. So, thank you all for that. And with that, also, councilmember Rader.
I, I just wanted to say about the Washington DC trip, I had to walk around with a sign that said I was a first-timer. And, I was. But I did want to say that Mayor Baird really did an excellent job. He had a nice presentation that he showed each one of the, the representatives that we got in front of. It, it was a rather enlightening trip. I learned a lot. It was fun networking with people. And John's gone, but we met the, we met the mayor of Carmel, Indiana. I wanted him to hear that. Anyway, but I just appreciated being able to go. It was a great experience. I hope everybody goes next year.
We're going. Okay, staff roundtable.
Three quick items. We have a couple of public meetings coming up on some major improvements that we'll be undertaking. One of those is prior road improvements. That public meeting will be held on April 3rd at Fire Station Number 7 between 4:30 and 6:30. That's prior road improvements from Longview to Hook section. Then, actually, this week, Wednesday, March 19th, from 5 to 7, Sheer Road, Sheer Parkway. This is the, the alignment study of the new Sheer Parkway that were no tax increase bond issue. March 19th, 5 to 7, at Hawthorne Hill Elementary, in the media center room. And then, a reminder that on March 20th, Career Fair for City Opportunities from 1 to 6 p.m. at the Gamber Center. And that's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay. Very good. This meeting is adjourned at 10:59.